I'd like to draw up the orders, the Oakmont Borough Council work session for August 1st, 2023. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Ms. Arnold.
Here.
Ms. Brinkley.
Here.
Ms. Friday.
Here.
Ms. Hoss.
Oh, she was excused.
Ms. Leonardi.
Here.
Ms. Pagnana.
Here.
And Borough Council President, Brian.
Here. Our first step this evening is an oath of office for the newly appointed Sergeant David Johnston by Maria Sophia Picars, but I'm not sure how that's happening.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna do, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, this, our mayor is in Greece. With a brand new grand job, so I wasn't quite sure how this would happen. But Gail is here instead and will do a lovely job, so if you could please stand up and Sergeant Johnston, if you could come
Please.
forward. Oh. Please raise your right hand. I'm David and Johnston.
I'm David and Johnston.
So, we swear our firm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this country.
And the Constitution.
And I will start the duties as Sergeant. You want to introduce us to your family?
This is Emma, I will just wire it, and this is Macy.
Hi, Macy.
Hi.
Yeah, come forward, anybody who wants to come on.
I'm the wife.
Yeah. Who else has come with you today?
My wife Rachel. My mother, Paul Law. Parents Steve, and then my mother and father, Sean and Larry.
Nice.
Absolutely.
Hey, David. We just realized we'll never see you again for years, so here I hope for next year.
So they will say that they'll hi me and then bye.
I want to tell all of you, you have no obligation to stay for the meeting. It's pretty when you're done, just. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
How long do I have? Okay, we have two registered speakers this evening, the first is Randy Gom, who's going to give our treasurer's report for the second quarter of 2023.
So there's a real irony because David played soccer with my son at Township before we moved to Oakmont, and his father was here, was his coach, so I got to see his parents who I hadn't seen in over a year.
So that's fun. Yeah.
Okay, I think you have the treasurer's report from the meeting a month ago, or the regular meeting in July. And so I couldn't be here that night, so I appreciate the flexibility in the schedule. So if you have the report in front of you, I'll just walk through some of the tables and the highlights, and then take any questions you have. So the first table is the cash balance, all but, every fund but one is actually increased the balance since the beginning of the year. The American Rescue Plan, we've been doing some work in that fund, so, so obviously we spent some money there, which is a good thing. But all the other funds have increased since the beginning of the year. Overall, the cash position is quite healthy at the end of June, we're 50% through the year, and that's sort of the benchmark we use since we don't budget, budget by month. So I'll walk through each of the key funds and make a few comments. So the current year, the general fund, the current year property tax, we've collected 92.9% of the annual budget, which is pretty good as of the end of June. You know, that's, that's really good. 56.5% of the earned income tax when we're only halfway through the year, so that's, that's good as well. So we're moving along on revenue from the general fund. Most of the expenditures are on track. Finance, engineering, building, fire, planning and zoning, and parks are all favorable. When I say favorable, I mean favorable by 5% or more to what you would expect at this time of year. Administration, public, the police, public works, they're all within 5%, so they're on track. And then tax collection, legal, technology, and shade tree are exceeding the budget by more than 5%. But there's some good reasons, and mostly timing. So technology had some cost for a firewall and server. Public Works had some early spending on leaf recycling and road salt, and there was an engine repair on a truck. And Shade Tree had some planned spending that was done in the spring, some trimming and tree removal in the spring that was planned early, so, but their budget is for the entire year. All the transfers were done in May, once the property taxes have been received. So the general fund has moved all the funding, as approved by council, to the various funds. The Boulevard project received about 82% of the grant for the LED, LED project, which was for the purchase of the lamppost. They're about 25% through the donations for the year, but their big fundraising occurs in the fourth quarter. It's usually in the November, December timeframe. So they spent the money on the LED project and, and received the grant money in turn. The Kerr Museum is only for the facility only, the foundation is taking care of all the other activities. So the first half of the year, they spent about 25% of the budget, some minor repairs, utilities, and contracted services for the Kerr Museum, for the facility itself. And the Kerr is responsible for the facility, the Kerr Museum Fund, and the foundation takes care of everything else related to fundraising and other activities. The library revenue is on track with the, the budget. Received a large regional asset district funding, the R8 and the Rad funding. There's a sizable grant still there with a 50-50 match for some HVAC controls that works expected later in the year. And all the transfers were made to the library earlier. Sewer fund is 43.6% of the total year budget as far as revenue is concerned. We need to watch that carefully, given the new bond issue. We want to make sure that we have that built in, we think we have it built in correctly, but we got to follow it as we go forward in the year. It's very cyclical how the sewage revenue comes in to fund the, the fund debt service on the bond. And so the debt service payments won't be made till the November timeframe later in the year. Capital Parks, the revenue has really been gas royalties from a few wells that are around. There is several large grants for CFA III, the Plum Creek Trail Phase II, and for the rescoping of Chateau Beach to a dog park. So those are all in the revenue projections, but also in the cost projections. So most of the expenditures this year, year-to-date, have been for Creekside Trail and for Dark Hollow. Liquid fuels, receive the money for liquid fuels, it's, it's about almost 8,000 more than the budget, but that'll be dispersed directly to the paving contractor once the paving contract is, once the paving project is completed this summer. Capital Roads, the funding is really for paving project, a big chunk of it, for the Allegheny River Boulevard reconstruction, for the portions of the bricks, as well as stormwater and flood control. And so there have been some stormwater and flood control activities that have been spent so far this year, but, but the rest of it will be spent as the paving project is completed and, and the other work is, is completed. Capital Reserve, there's been very little activity, been some minor income from the electric charging stations down at Riverside Park, so that money is coming in to the, it's going into the Capital Reserve. Not a whole lot, but there's been some. And the American Rescue Fund, as I said before, costs have been incurred for some stormwater and flood control projects at Holton Road and 13th in California and 8th. So those were done earlier in the year, so those funds have been expended for that, and there's other plans for projects going through the rest of the year. So the bond update from December 2021, there's a, there's a supplemental page that shows the, the usage of the bond. The, the Series B bond has, has been dispersed for all the things that were planned originally. There does remain a balance on that of $462,503. And then on the sewage bond, as they're going through more, the Series A1 and A2, as they're going through more design, next year will probably be the big year for dispersals. There has been 197,000 dispersed thus far, but that'll be more once they get through the detailed design, and then it'll, it'll be a, a pretty large expenditure going into next year. That's all separate, so you can see that we are earning some interest on those two bonds. And obviously, the Huntington Bank is working with us to make sure we avoid arbitrage, because we can only earn so much on that going forward, so, so it shouldn't be an issue at this point.
What's the term, then, of the, the arbitrage?
Do you remember what Joe told us, it was, so?
I think before it was like 2.8.
Yeah, it's, it's in the 2% to 3% range, John, it's, it's a fairly low limit. We're not that quite there yet, we haven't done a review, and then we did one a few months ago. We probably need to do another one with the finance committee that we have set up, just to make sure we're on track. But it's really the sewage bond is the big issue, because we haven't dispersed those funds yet. So we can only earn so much, and it's limited to, it's probably less than 3%.
2.88%.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I remember too, from the meeting we had with Joe.
Is that an annual number for the interest, or is that a total?
No, it's an, it's an annual number. It can't go higher than that, or we just end up giving it back to the IRS, because it's a tax-free bond, so it goes back.
So in theory, you could earn 2.5 or 2.8.
Yeah, you could earn less. We will definitely maximize it on the soup, on the A Series A, for sure. The, the B, because we've dispersed the funds already, there's not much left there, so it's not, it's not going to be as big. But yeah, you could earn less, but they're going to help us maximize it, so we get, we just can't make more than that, you know?
But again, it's on an annual basis as opposed to the life of the year.
And the worst case is you make more and you give it back.
Right.
It doesn't hurt us.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt.
It's just a refund by the government, an amount in excess of the percentage.
Would that allow us to plow back into something in the meantime?
I, we can't, if we, no.
I think, I, I would say, David, the, the biggest issue on the, on the Series B, it's mostly going to disperse. So we, we have used it for some things that we, it's council-approved, and there are still some funding available for something that you could use that for.
I'm referring more to the sewage.
Yeah, the sewage bond, I think it's more, for Series A, I think it's more an issue for any contingencies, you know? This thing was put in place in 2021 with a preliminary design. I think the big risk is, what's the actual cost going to end up being at the end of the day? So the earnings that we've had of 400,000 so far, which is pretty substantial on that kind of money, that can be used for contingency on, in, in addition to the contingency that we've got built in already. So I think that's the big risk, until we get the design done and we start spending money on the plant, that's where it's really going to come in.
I mean, I don't want to get into the reasons, because it's not part of the president's thing. Can we, could we plow some of the interest money we're earning, especially if we're getting close to the arbitrage threshold and to re-mining some more stores? I mean, that is related, obviously, to what the bond is for, and instead of losing that interest money, spending it in, you know?
It would take a couple months to get a plan together.
Right.
But it's possible, or what we haven't done, not that I draw it out, and the engineering costs we've incurred so far, they're either between Patrick Lenz and Solar Lenz and Solar specifically for the intercept and what you just did, nor Hatch for pump station, and the design we could do a treatment plan right now and see, it's like hundreds of thousands, but it's a start.
Right, you have to say, if we're willing to spend this money at some point.
Well, I think that is, so it gives us some protection if inflation or if these costs would increase over what we estimated. We'd buy this extra money then to pay the necessary expenses.
I think Dave's point is is, you know, well raised. If we can spend some of that money today, rather than putting it in the bank, those dollars are much more effective today than they will be in the future, just because of inflation. You know, if we're earning 3% or less, and car inflation right now is running, what, 5, 6%? It's better to spend that money as soon as possible to get the largest impact, rather than keeping it in the bank and essentially just losing.
What I would recommend, though, is that we get an actual opinion from our bond people, rather than guessing.
Well, I, I think the bigger issue is the design project. I mean, I think you're talking 400,000 versus 16 million. I think the bigger issue is, from my, from my, where I sit, is all the money we have earmarked for all the different scopes of project. And so are we going to spend all that on various, I mean, project? There's a lot more money available there, I think, to do exactly what you're saying. Once we get the design done, we know what it's really going to cost, probably by the end of this year. But I think it'd be fall of this year, then we can really determine, okay, what can we do to, like related to the sewer project, what can we do to take advantage of the funding that's available, plus the interest that we earn?
I, I don't expect any kind of solution to this now, just instead of giving money back to the bank.
Yeah, absolutely.
If we could put it into the store line, that strikes me as a better way.
So what we can do is, we'll be with the Huntington folks and find out where, how close we are, and where that, that threshold is, and then also work with the design, the engineering company to find out when the design and how much funding will be available, because I think there's going to be funding available to do alternate scope and other things. But it's, it's really predicated on the design that's fine, because, you know, these projects were one for quite some time. You may even see the one across the river that they're doing in Allegheny Valley, that's taking time, you know, so.
My understanding, when they first talked about this, is that the refund, if, if it were to happen to the IRS at the end, would be at the end of this bond. Once we have spent out what we're doing for their bond, I didn't think it was anything that we would be doing in increments annually, it would be at the last great day.
Yeah, it'd be after we disperse everything, at the, at a minimum, it'd be after we disperse everything, so. Any other questions? Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay. Our second registered speaker this evening is Jason Bailey from Bailey Operations Consulting, who prepared a peer review of the Borough's Public Works divisions, which we engaged him to do, and welcome.
Thank you so much.
And this evening, I was thinking about this, that I think because of the volume of information you provided us, that having you review it with us today, and then each of us to think what questions we might have, and we can prepare a kind of a composite of those questions for you down the road. And, and also, I was going to ask Scott, also in the interim, to give us a written kind of response to Jason's presentation with your take on the suggestions that he's made and what we're going to do. And then we may invite you back and sit down and kind of spend time going through all that.
Abiding.
Abiding. He didn't say dinner. But, so that's how I'd like to proceed tonight, I mean, if anybody has a real factual question, they can feel free to ask it. But I think to try to make a dialogue of this at this point may not really be productive for your time anymore. So.
Great.
Your turn.
Great, well, thank you so much. First off, I'd like to introduce Bethany Williams. Bethany is with DCED, and they funded this, this project for, you know, for the borough. So, you know, through this engagement, I was working under the state, and Bethany, do you want to say anything about the project, or?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that we don't get to do often is offer ProVo to help. This is one of the great programs that when a news colleague asks, we are able to leverage some hours of support, where you don't pay anything out of pocket, we're able to leverage our experts for specific questions. And so that's what we did here, and there are a lot of other subjects that we have experts on, so if anything comes to the future, please at mine. But otherwise, I'll make sure at least in parts, so if you have some questions for the department, you can walk through each of them. I'm located in the Southwest office, so I'm here presented.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Great, so you guys will reap the benefit of that. So, you know, really what I'd like to do is, you know, I wrote this down into three main categories for you all. So really, it had to do with a complete overview of not only your streets department, but also your parks operation, because they really are intertwined, and then also your treatment plan. And, you know, when we think about public works and all those different areas that they cover, including facility maintenance, you know, your parks management, taking care of the streets, it really encompasses on just about the entire borough, you know, the police department are even wrapped into this thing somehow that we'll talk about, with the, you know, the shared space of the garage and things like that. So, so I really feel like this was all-encompassing, and it was a really good timing for this right now, because you do have some things that we can talk about in, in review about getting in front of, for the borough in their operations. So we'll, we'll go ahead and jump right in, if that's okay. So I'm just going to kind of follow along on the slides that you all have, they're going to be shown up here. I've got this right here friendly, so I'll just come be reviewing this. So, you know, you are represented by a collective bargaining agreement with your streets employees, they, that your, your, and your plant employees. So aside from the, the plant supervisor down there, I did provide a review of that contract and provided, you know, some comments under a separate cover to Scott, that just looked at that entire contract. I do think that that would be important for council to take a look at that at some point. I, I was not going to go into that here today, because there are multiple, you know, if you thought this was long, that one's pretty long too, so. But I went through it line by line in the contract and just provided some context to what we see in bargaining trends right now, wages around the region and things like that, just as well as how operations are oftentimes discussed in those agreements. The next, in, we'll spend some time on this on the next couple of slides that I don't want to go to quite yet, is the, is the structure. And I know that that was one of the primary concerns that you all brought into the study was, you know, are we set up correctly with the way that our management is, is set up, and the way that our labor force is actually operating? So I did provide you with two different proposals in here that I think address that, and we'll talk about that in a bit. I'll just buzz through a few of these other items on here. I, I recommended a very specific training path for both the labor and your supervisor, really to help them deal with the everyday things that they are involved with. Some of this, some of these are certifications that they can, can work towards. Others are ongoing training, like for the supervisor and, and how they manage the, the department. And that, that was across the board for all three levels of those operations, your streets, your parks, and your treatment plant. I provided a, you know, a really workable training plan, I think, for everyone. I did provide a sample agenda for a meeting that Scott has been using actually over the past, maybe it's been the past year, two years. This was early on, that, you know, I, I always suggest that the manager sit down and meet with the next level supervisor over top of their labor group to talk about a weekly happenings that are happening. Sometimes it's every two weeks, but more likely it's going to be every week. And that was broken down into different categories to talk about weekly happenings of the various operations, but it also talked about if there's any personnel issues, you know, what does the equipment, you know, status? What are the buildings, are there any issues with the buildings? Has council requested anything? And so Scott has been following that, whenever they've been able to meet and, and kind of go over things. I suggested that that be put in place for all three operations again, and that, that be a more routine approach towards everybody staying in the loop and things working their way back up to council, you know, as he, as Scott would kind of weed through what you all would need to be informed on. The next was, you, you know, you started down this path, and the, the plant staff have a really good handle on the GIS data right now. They've, they've really invested a lot in that, to the point where they're actually out there performing the one calls, you know, that are, that are required to be marked throughout the, the borough. It was a little odd that the sewer treatment plant staff are doing that right now. So one of my suggestions was actually, you know, reassigning that over to the streets. It would involve them actually being more responsible for learning how to use that system, but it more aptly fits with streets employees, that they would be the ones out there working this. They're currently not necessarily marking the storm system, because it's not all that accurately mapped, which is a little bit of a challenge. The signal system, the, the electric lines that are on the roadways, those all kind of strike us all with streets assets and not necessarily assets that your sewer water employees would be responsible for. So it made sense to possibly consider moving those things out, but, and also collecting more data on there. So some of the things that I called out in there is that, like, the guide rail is not, you know, tracked right now. You don't necessarily know how many feet of guide rail you have. You don't know how many linear feet of crosswalk lines you have, or stop bars, parking lines, all of those things that, when we ask how long or how much does it cost for this work to be done, we could back into that if we knew exactly how much they were doing, but we don't know that, because it's not tracked that way currently. So, and it's easy to do that, it's, it's relatively easy to do that, but folks need to be trained, and there needs to be an active plan on actually gathering that information in that data. The next thing had to do with a development of fleet replacement plan. You know, this, this is for the whole borough, so this would be for police, this would be for public works administration, code enforcement. Everybody that drives a vehicle within the, the borough would be, would fall under this fleet replacement plan. The recommendation was, was to follow a, a document that sets objective criteria for vehicle replacements, and it identifies when vehicles are actually eligible for replacement, not necessarily when they want to be replaced. So for instance, if, you know, you, you know, and I always use the police as an example, but if, if the police officer, if the chief came and said, you know, I'd like to replace this, you know, this Tahoe, it's, you know, it's got 40,000 miles on it, we've had it for one year, but it's got such high miles, it might have a lot of work orders against it. This system that I presented to, you know, in the report, allows you to actually quantify, you know, when a vehicle needs to be replaced, rather than when it should be replaced. Sometimes that, that can kind of help avoid those knee-jerk reaction purchases, you know, for a department head coming in saying that we want to replace this, because we don't like the color. because we don't like the color of it, or we don't like the way it sounds right now, or something like that. But there's a more objective criteria that's provided for that. The next thing was, and I put all of these under administrative, because I do think that some of these would fall under possibly the borough manager's purview, that he could have a direct impact very quickly on some of these items. But you all also have to be involved in this one, is the property that you currently use for your leaf program. It's currently private property. It's a handshake arrangement that you have up down. Is it an ashtray? An street. So it's a handshake arrangement, but you do actively use the property. And it's something to think about, you know, securing that property under some type of formal agreement. Even if it's just documenting what the program is and when the property is actually being used, it could go away in a heartbeat in the borough to be kind of upside down in that particular program, or at least need to find a new space for it. The next thing was, and this one's a little, you know, this is really in the weeds, is the traffic blocking that takes place on the main street. There's several smaller receptacles that are out there that your streets guys are, you know, required to go out and pick up trash out there. They do it regularly, it's on a schedule, but it's very frequent. You have very little trash out on your main street as a result of that. However, this is something that a lot of communities contract with their hauler, and the hauler will actually pick that up and make that part of their weekly collection site. Now, it's not going to be done to the frequency of that you have right now, but if you could at least reduce the frequency, we're talking about trying to free up time for these guys to do the work of a street department, not necessarily lower level labor things like pick up random trash bags like this. So this type of thing helps to free up their time to do more and more productive things with their time, like street repairs and things like that. The next item was, you started to develop an informal work order system. It is something to be built on. I think the access to that system, it's not necessarily used by everyone. The park system's not using it, the plant, they have their own thing going on down there. They could also be using this. So all of this information is kind of in different places right now, and then it needs to be brought in through different systems in order to try to understand exactly where all this time is spent and where all the resources are spent. Yes, the budget does a good job of capturing that stuff, but time and material, actually time on product, you know, specific activities and projects are not very easily captured as a result of that. So that's what that particular one has to do with. I would like to spend, you know, a little bit of time on the next couple of slides just about, you know, looking at your current structure for the department, which is, right now, the borough manager has three direct reports, you know, being one full-time non-union plant superintendent, or a full-time union crew leader, and one full-time non-union parks superintendent. As far as the operational department goes, that's what your current setup looks like. I did throw in there the occasional seasonals. They are used throughout both on the streets at times and also in the parks. However, this is what the current structure is. Underneath the plant superintendent and also underneath the parks superintendent, they both have, you know, there's that middle level management piece that has existed, and they actually supervise the day-to-day work activities. They plan the activities, they're responsible for the budget. You know, they are directly involved in the operations. Under the street side of that operations, the borough manager is supposed to be the direct line of fire with the bargaining personnel. Under these next two suggestions that I'm putting out there, that, I would say that that evens the playing field for the operational side, taking the borough manager out of that equation. And under this next slide, we see where, you know, we introduced this concept of a public works director. You know, typically, I would say that when you have between five to six employees, that's usually about the accountability level that I'm usually comfortable with, where I know where everybody is with one person. In the, with the current succession plan of your plant superintendent contemplating, you know, retirement at some point here, and a decision having to start being made with what that's going to look like for you all in the near future. You know, this thought of introducing this idea of a public works director who could possibly oversee all three divisions is a concept to think about. It's just an idea, you know, because I also introduce in here another full-time laborer for the parks system. I think that your park system is incredibly well maintained right now. However, in talking with staff, it's becoming harder and harder to find that long-term season. You know, the likeliness of those guys constantly returning year after year is not there, even according to the labors that I talked with. There's a good chance that they may not, you know, come back every year. So, you know, introducing a more sustainable concept there, adding another full-time laborer over there, you perform a lot of work at that park down there. You know, under, you know, and I mentioned something in there about the school arrangement, but the, but it does require regular attention. There's a lot of things that aren't getting done down there. There's a lot of improvements that could be done that are like talking about irrigating the fields or turning those into turf or something like that, that don't make them maintenance-free. All those do is increase the maintenance, actually. But those are concepts and things that, for that particular park down there, are things to be thinking about. So whenever you introduce a director, I always, you know, don't want to leave you high and dry on the administrative side either. And so in both of these models, I also introduce a part-time administrative assistant. So this is somebody that's above and beyond what you have now, that would be focused to assist the director and work with staff on helping them to close out a lot of these administrative tasks. It takes a lot of time to close out P A one calls. It takes a lot of time to do the bill coding and things like that, that right now, your middle level management piece below the borough manager are all performing. So I do feel like there is, you know, once we introduce these next level management pieces, that they do require some additional oversight, and a part-time administrative assistant at the least is something to consider. Under the second concept here for your organization, the first one involved the idea of a public works director. So in the absence of a director, and I don't know exactly, I didn't get too involved in things that are happening on the second floor of your building up here. But there are things like, you know, other projects and possible activities that you might consider, and that's, you know, possibly introducing this concept of an assistant borough manager who may be responsible for operations. So maybe you don't necessarily introduce this idea of a director, but maybe it's something a little bit more where you can use them in a more versatile way with the administration, assign them to more things than just public works related things. I do still think that this concept of adding a full-time laborer for parks is something to still be considered. I think that the concept of adding more seasonal labor in the streets side of the operation is important, just because of the paperwork that they can, you know, further accomplish. And then again, even with this assistant borough manager position, I still think that the part-time administrative assistant will serve all three of those operations well. And right now, like I said, the plant superintendent, you know, they don't, I'll say right now, they don't make them like anymore. The guy does it all, right? And you're very fortunate in all of the employees that you have. But that is a special type of makeup that you have down there and with that setup. You know, to try to think that the next person that you bring in down there, even if you promote from within, is going to be able to do the administrative tasks and the technical job that he does for you, I think that's a tall order. So that is why I proposed what I did in those two different scenarios there. Switching, continuing to switch gears a little bit, and I'll spend some time specifically on the streets now. When I went down, you know, I did a complete tour, and I probably have three hundred pictures that I took of your whole operation here. But, you know, one of the things that I noticed right out of the gate is the crew meeting space. This is something that could be addressed, you know, in relatively short order. Non-inacceptable meeting space. And I told the crew, even whenever I was there, that this is probably one of the, one of the more unique spaces that I've seen. You know, I'm not a tall guy, and I was punched over as I was, you know, walking in there, you know, pretty dark. But it sets the tone for the day, right? You know, if you're, if you're, if you're someone in a dark, you know, cave-like setting, like that is back in there, it really does, you know, you can set the tone for how work is going to be assigned, how, you know, how the crew's going to, you know, accept that work. So I think relocating that, you know, turning that into more of a cold storage or something else other than what it is right now, I think is important. There's obviously, you know, one way in and one way out of that joint, so it's also, you know, a little bit of a safety concern, I think, that can be addressed there as well. So that's one of, that's one of the things, and I addressed that more in the report for you there. I also think that the technology that the crews using, they have the opportunity to really improve that. They're using an older desktop. They, you know, Josh was, you know, he was one of the guys, I think, who was very tech savvy, very, you know, into what he, you know, does currently. He does have access to the G I S system on his phone and on a tablet. I think that introducing this across the board would be, really yield some big benefits. Keeping along the, along the lines of what the facility looked like, I think that an annual inspection, I know that your insurance carrier may do something like this. I know they do either annual or bi-annual inspections, but I think a more routine, everyday-type inspection on some type of a frequency where we're looking at where are things stored at near electrical cabinets? You know, what does the walking space look like? There was just, there's a lot of stuff down there, a lot of things on the floor, a lot of things that aren't necessarily organized in the right order. So I think there's an opportunity to really improve that. And again, that type of thing really improves morale. I think if you walk into a good-looking shop, you see what, you know, what you have to work with. I think there's a lot of opportunity for that. Now, it is an old space, and it's a reused space, and it's been built up on, and it's been changed and things like that. There's a couple of different renditions of it that are going on down there. I think having, you know, a renovation of that space may be in order. They would look at the lighting, they would look at exactly where things are stored in space. You can hire an architect that will come in, and they'll do a much more thorough evaluation of that than I can do. But talking about exactly how much garage floor space you need for trucks, you did have some equipment that was parked outside or down at the yard off of A N Street. I think that could be under roof, that could warrant that. As part of the housekeeping, you know, while I was walking down one of the hallways there, there's a lot of boxes in that one hallway, a lot of computer equipment, you know, things like that. You know, whether that was enforcing a records retention policy or getting that stuff stored to the mine, or wherever you guys put that stuff. But having that retention policy so that it's not necessarily taking up valuable floor space. This was right outside of the locker room area of where the guys would actually turn into is where I saw there was a lot of, you know, just things that needed to be taken care of, things that needed to be cleaned up. You know, a formal snow and ice control plan, you know, when I did my survey of Borough Council, the regular comment that I got was, these guys do a great job with winter maintenance, that, you know, we all think that they do a really good job of this, and that they, they perform well. You know, it is still important to have a plan, and it is still important to be looking at, how does this get done in the absence of three guys not reporting one day? So that you know what a backup plan might look like, what equipment did you have to actually address snow and ice, and also look at different ways to treat the roads around here. You have a mix, and those brick roads need to be treated a little bit differently than asphalt, and they need to be handled differently. And so there's, there are ways for that to be a training item, and also to look at the type of material that you're using that could have a more positive impact on those brick streets. I mentioned before about the G I S, about paint lines, so really just developing a more formal book, reassigning one calls. Also talked about, you know, along the lines of winter maintenance, you know, you have a large investment in trucks and equipment down there. Having some type of undercarriage spray system that would, you know, spray on assault neutralizer would help to prolong the life of those trucks as well. And that's something that the guys could actually even design and construct and have available down there in one of the bins. The street signs, great, you know, you've really rolled out a really nice decorative street sign. There's a lot of those still downstairs. Let's knock that thing out. One of the things, you know, there's an opportunity there to, you know, there was a, I don't remember exactly what the count was, but it wasn't, it wasn't much, but they've been down there for a few years now, is what it sounded like. And it's a filler project. I think moving those out, making sure that they're completely installed, and also standardizing the sign installation process. There's a mix of round U-channel and square posts that are out in the sign network right now. They have to carry all those posts, and that's what they do right now. If they had just the same kind of post, they would only have to carry one set of hardware, and that would really help to reduce the maintenance problems that they're up against with that. Right now, those guys are doing some miscellaneous mowing out in the system. There's a bunch of one-off areas where they have the trailer, pushmowers, hedge clippers, things like that. You know, the parks do this every day, and they're already trailering equipment. You know, get that off of those guys' plate, move that on to parks is what the suggestion is there. Reducing the street sweeping frequency, this was another item. You guys do have beautiful streets, you know, down here pretty frequently. However, I think that, you know, I mean, you can eat off those streets right now, that's how I'm playing here. I think you could really reduce the frequency of your street sweeping and still have the same effect. You know, possibly limiting it to certain areas where you sweep, rather than the amount that's done right now. So I did provide you with some suggestions on what that frequency might look like to reduce that down. Staying with fleet maintenance, also discussing here that if, this is a concept about, you know, possibly bringing work back in-house for the crew to actually perform. You have qualified guys downstairs that are handy with this. They sometimes bring in their own equipment to work on vehicles and equipment when they need to. But centralizing fleet maintenance, whether that's oil changes and things like that, where there could be some savings by having that work being done in-house, tire rotations, oil changes, you know, low-level stuff to start with, but then possibly eventually work your way up. But I do think you'd see some significant savings with that, aside from the outsourced garage fees that you have right now. The last item for streets was really to start to prioritize crack sealing. That's one of the lowest forms of maintenance that a municipality can do that has the biggest benefit. You know, you rent this machine for a week, about eight hundred dollars to a thousand dollars for the week. You buy the crack seal material for about a thousand dollars a pallet, and you can pretty much knock out a ton of streets within the borough. It's one of the lowest forms of maintenance you can do, but it has one of the biggest impacts and payoffs that you can get into. It's certainly something that the guys can do in-house. So it's a suggestion that I said, try to bring it back in-house. I promise we're working our way through, we've got two more slides. The, the. Yeah, it's just my day, very exciting. So the next was, was parks maintenance. So you have this agreement with the school district. I think that that's under review right now, as far as, I think that might be expired maybe. You know, the next year. You know, when that agreement was drafted, and my comments to that affect, where was that? You know, that's really a one-sided agreement in there right now. I really encourage you to, and I provided some suggestions on what you need to do to kind of equalize that a little bit. They're a huge user of that park down there. There should be a much bigger cost share involved in the maintenance, in your personnel costs, and also in your capital improvement plans that you have down there. If you are thinking about turf, if you are thinking about irrigation, capital improvements should all be included in that agreement that they cost share with that, because they benefit. So those are things that I definitely encourage you to dig into a little bit more. I provided you with some, you know, some thoughts on additional items there. The other was, you know, I talked about the full-time labor there. Also about having a certified playground inspector, this is usually a two-day course. I think John went to a inspector course for this, but I don't necessarily know that he goes certifications for it. I think he went for the class, but not necessarily the certification. You know, playground equipment, you know, is a, you know, it's a ticking time bomb frame by the nature that somebody gets hurt, you know, who are they coming after, right? They're always coming after the park. Well, an inspector, someone who knows what they're looking for will know exactly what needs to be addressed in that area. I provided you with some examples on, you know, where you can reduce your labor costs. You have a ton of benches throughout the park, which are wonderful, but you also make a lot of work for the guys by not having cement pads on. Same thing with bleachers, they have to go out physically, move those bleachers, weed and mow under those. Again, these are, these are things that you can be thinking about the school district, about participating in, you know, improving this to reduce those maintenance costs. Anytime a guy's got to jump off a mower, that's time wasted, right? They got to get out there and do all the weed eating and all that kind of stuff, or spraying or whatever. If you can reduce that in all those areas, you have a ton of them. I provided you with some pictures of, and you were thinking, there's even one up here on the screen with those bleachers. When they need to mow that, they need to move, get out, physically move those, sometimes with two guys, and actually, you know, get the work done there. The other item that you can do to help reduce that is to get someone certified as an applicant or through the department back. I don't think I've ever helped. You can have somebody spray, licensed to spray, which would also help with roadside vegetation and also parks, where they could go out there and spray growth regulators on fence lines and things like that, where you have a lot of heavy string trimming, weed eating that's done on the edges there. They could actually spray those things, and rather than having to cut string trim once a week, they could go to every three weeks or even once a month sometimes, depending on the types of products that you put down. The facilities for parks, so two facilities, one park. That's what you have going on there right now. They share the fieldhouse garage side and also the building that's down at the far end of the park. By combining, you know, renovating that building, you know, changing rooms, restrooms, all in one building. Right now, if the guys have to go to the restroom, they're actually sharing that facility in the fieldhouse with the public. So same thing with their lunch, you know, if they need to drink, things like that. So some of those kind of things are things that I think definitely need to, you know, be renovated, upgraded, improving that facility. The equipment was stored pretty tightly in the fieldhouse as well, prone to accidents, damage, things like that as well. So whether it's a grounds maintenance facility or something else, there is certainly an opportunity. I also encourage electronic security access in all the facilities. So this was not just the parks, not just public works, the treatment plant. So this was not just the parks, not just public works, the treatment plant, I called out the security gate down there. All the doors down there would, would benefit from having secure access to parks as well, uh, for all of their buildings. That would benefit administration as well. You can use that to kind of, you know, not necessarily keep track of employees, but also to, you know, for their safety and things like that. About if something happens after hours, you can be alerted that something's going on. And the last item there for parks was turf and irrigation. Uh, I, it's a major thing right now, um, high schools and middle schools. It's all the, I'm not going to say it's all the rage, but it's all the rage, right? About, you know, improved turf facilities and things like that. The last, um, area that I'll cover there for you is going to be your plant operations. And of course, this has the fewest of items, right? Joe does such a, uh, you know, bang-up job, uh, in his setup down there. But obviously, number one, you should start thinking about succession, right, for what you're doing with him. So whether that's with the director or what else, whatever else you're thinking about there, but something else needs to be in the works for Joe because of what we've talked about there. The, the other item is that right now, um, you don't have an active sewer line camera, uh, program right now. A lot of that's in one of the guys' heads right now as to where your known sewer problems are. Um, really investing in the sewer collection system is important. Well, whenever you do that, it takes video storage and it takes a lot of bucks to store that video to keep as part of your G I S system, uh, for, for accessibility. So I do encourage you to, to start down that path. Um, with that, we'll come to sewer lining program. I heard you talk about where can you spend money? Right there. Um, you know, there's, you can lose it like that in a program like Slip Line. I know that you have a big project coming up with your treatment plan expansion. And, um, I talked to Joe about some other items as far as, um, you know, I think you had a pump station project going this year, right? So, uh, encourage online, uh, bidding, whether that's with Penn Bid or some of the other bid programs that are out there next time. Those online bidding, um, services, um, they're, they're usually offered at no cost to the borough. Uh, and they really do encourage competition, uh, in the market. Um, I have seen communities go from having three bidders to, you know, having so seven and ten bidders, uh, from across the state just because of the exposure that it gives you. And they also are bidding from out of the state as well. Um, I know Leonard Smith is familiar with some of these different programs. The other nice thing about it is, is that it gives you the ability to really maintain some trackability of your bids over time, about what rates look like. So if you had a bid ten years ago, you, you, you really had quick access, electronic access and it's your data, you know, regardless of who the, uh, the engineer might be, uh, at the time for that project. Uh, last thing, I, again, just talked about electronic gate and overall plant security. This involves the perimeter fencing, um, down at the plant, but also the, the, the access doors in, uh, in that, that gate, uh, access to the plant. So I know that was a mouthful. I wanted to just try to get through it for you. Uh, and, uh, I am available after you have a chance to digest all of that. If you have any questions about anything, um, you know, where to start on priorities. Um, I'm happy to talk through that with you at a later date.
I'm, I'm curious, the, just in the, uh, succession planning for the, for Joe in particular. Would that fit in with the public works as being, the, basically would, Joe's replacement or could it be public works director and still maintain the same, uh, three, you know, union positions essentially in wastewater? Or do you see that as a position above a supervisor at the wastewater?
Yeah. So I actually had the conversation with Joe, right, about, you know, what, you know, does he feel like his position would have the time and, you know, the broad focus of a director who needs to be responsible for facilities, parks, as well as a street plan, and then also focus on the treatment plan? So a couple of things to think about there is that, you know, obviously, you know, Joe has to have a very specific license, you know, to operate that plant. So, um, you know, does a plant operator or, or does a plant supervisor necessarily need to have a license? You know, because you do have plant operators that are down there. It's those subclasses that, that do matter that the, that the operators have. Um, I, I don't necessarily think that it's imperative that Joe's position as, as plant superintendent necessarily be replaced with another plant superintendent, um, who, who could also be the, uh, public works director. But, uh, I, I do think that there are, uh, that level of a, uh, manager out there who could handle both of those. Where you would have your rank and file plant laborers down there overseen by a non-licensed plant manager who could oversee it. It could also be the public works director. Now, just, you know, to, to think about that though, you know, you'd be thinking about compensation, of course. You know, it's going to come at a cost with that goal role, but I think that, I do think that that's entirely possible. It's a skill set that's, that is something. That's right.
One on the, on the vehicle maintenance. I think what we need there is, is a plan as well as, you know, an overall formal plan for vehicle maintenance. Some sort of checklist for each vehicle as to what's being done, because we have a problem in the past. Without such plan, vehicles are not being maintained.
And if I could just.
This is a lot of money. And the other question was, in your suggestion for part-time employees from the street department, how does that fit? Does that impact the fact that the current street department employees are utilized?
It doesn't. Your contract allows for the use of seasonal and part-time labor currently. So that's why the suggestion was, was in there and, and that's in is the, uh, contract review, uh, that I, that I provided to Scott. The, um, I think to address your vehicle, uh, equipment maintenance, I, I completely agree with you. The guys do have, um, you know, paper records down there. Um, the vehicle maintenance is not captured in your software card. Um, it's.
We need, I mean, they have record maybe. Uh, that only says what you did, doesn't say what you didn't do.
Sure, or what you do, right, right.
What we need is a checklist. This vehicle, oil change, you know, run it once a week, et cetera, all the things that are necessary to keep a vehicle running properly. They should have a formal checklist for each and every vehicle that the borough maintains.
Sure, I, there's, there's, I, you know, I, I think that paper, you know, the, the days of the paper record keeping like the crew does now. And that's what they had, I mean, that's what they had. There's folders down there with every vehicle. They do, uh, uh, what I would say is the best that they, they have right now.
I don't care if it's on paper or Excel.
Well, it matters. It matters. I, I think.
It should be not.
Yeah, because the reason is, is that, you know, if, if you gave me a paper spiral bound notebook, it's, it, it told me to try to maintain a, a calendar of when mileage is, is done. If right now, your crew has fuel cards in every one of those vehicles, when they go and fuel up at the local gas station, they type in a PIN. That PIN logs with the, with the fuel pump and with the gas station. If you were doing that with your, with your own personal vehicle, you would be able to look up at the, it, it, you know, at the sticker that's in your upper left-hand corner and say, okay, I'm at this mileage. And you try to line that up with your odometer and that kind of thing. If you had software that you were tracking that stuff, and this would even go so far as to say with the police department. This, when you, when you would fuel up, you would, you would enter that into the software and it would actually alert you to say, this vehicle is due for an oil change now. Those are the kind of things, we want to try to take the human error out of those types of low-level things like that. Because there's simple, there's software out there regardless of the employees that you have, you know, you, you, who are familiar with, you know, how to schedule that type of maintenance. You know, there is something in place, you know, that, that can address that. Uh, and there's absolutely software out there that can do it. Um, you know, your current work order system, you know, does not have that right now. But, um, I, you know, I think that there's some very good solutions out there that you could consider.
Anybody else? Well, I thought it was exceptionally informative.
Thank you.
And we will get back here and thank you for, thank you. We do not pay comments from the public, uh, on agenda and other public related items. Clearly state your name and address and mention comments to your minutes.
My name is Don Sigler. I live at forty Crystal Drive in Oakmont. And, uh, actually by the entrance of Dark Hollow Woods, which we treasure. Thank you distinguished members of Oakmont leadership for the opportunity to speak briefly. Um, I just two days ago read this article on the design of the BOP trail. Uh, and, uh, my wife and I live, you know, like I mentioned, right by Dark Hollow Woods. So yesterday we hiked on, uh, Dark Hollow Woods, uh, this new half-mile section. And in reading the article, I did want to say that I did share your concerns, um, counsel president Brian about the alligator of a boulevard aspect that would be. But really wanted to just address, uh, the concerns we have about the, um, the Dark Hollow Woods, uh, section of the trail. And this is, um, my thoughts are really kind of a bit disjointed because I just did this yesterday. I usually like to prepare PowerPoint presentations and everything. I thought that wouldn't be appropriate for this time. But, uh, so my wife and I, or the comments we have are, are unfavorable comments to what we saw. We walked on that trail. We're both avid hikers, bikers. We, uh, have, have hiked on, uh, a lot of trails throughout the country and internationally. And we do a lot of bicycle riding on the Gap Trail and the Freeport Development Trail. And so, but when we looked at this, uh, trail that had been, the work that's been done from New London Lane, we had, you know, Oakmont Commons there. We used to live in Oakmont Commons on New London Lane. So we hiked along the Plum Creek section of the trail. And we were pretty displeased. I know it's in process and everything. But the workmanship seemed very shocking. We treasure my dark hollow. I mean, it, it's really a great resource for Oakmont. And it's really important. So on the trail, the work that's been done, there are no clear side boundaries to the trail. There's just gravel all over the place and there was excessive amount of gravel indiscriminately put all of, in great ones. And what you see doesn't look like a nice trail. It looks like a very poorly constructed gravel. And trees were cut down to, uh, quit, the, uh, gravel down and everything. And road surface, I don't know if you've walked that road there that goes behind the Oakmont Commons houses. But it's really got a big center pump in it. There are brides where they try, uh, tires go. It hasn't been graded at all, so that it's not a level trailer. And, uh, it appears that there was no real pride to take in the workmanship that was done. And I know there's still more work to be done, but it really looks like it should be remedied with a better job done at the cost of the contractor. And what our concern is, this goes all the way up to the entrance of Dark Hollow Woods. Our concern is if there's this shoddy work still being done going through Dark Hollow Woods by Plum Creek, that would be a disaster. That's a beautiful stretch. We, it's so pleasant to walk there, hike there. And it's just a real treasure, uh, to the community. So we thought we really need to take this opportunity to just share our concern. I, I wish I could praise it, you know, and bring it, but you don't hear positive comments. I guess people don't, you know, say, I wonder. I'm going to try to remember that in the future. I come in with a positive comment. But, um, we've just enjoyed, my wife grew up in Oakmont, this is my wife Judy. And she is like in Dark Hollow Woods since she was a, a young girl. And, uh, I've, I've there for like twenty-five years. And it's just pretty distressing us to see what's been done. And if anybody wants a tour to see that, to, to see what you're talking about, we could do that. And I plan to go to the recreation meetings that you have, I think it's in two weeks here to share some of this. So thanks for listening. I, I don't mean to be a complainer, but if there are questions, you know, I'd be.
It's good to, it's good to hear your concerns. Can I just ask you a question and start? Has the small, um, fine limestone stuff been applied yet?
Uh, I can.
It is for a project, is what it is.
Well, I could answer that. Uh, just at the very entrance, there's a little bit that's been dumped there on. But it was pleasing to see that. I saw that later in the day that they are planning to do that. But it does seem like the base they put down is very, it's like a very thick of the gravel. And it looks like, I also toured what the surface in the creek side of the park. And it's very appropriate surface, you know, it has gravel, but it has the fine. It's very smooth. There's totally, you know, it's opposite. It just looks like whoever did it is not going with it.
To that point, I mean.
In front of the, the engineer's report, but yes, uh, I, I guess the takeaway, the short answer is, um, we share some of the concerns that have been raised by the project is certainly not been, uh, there certainly can be a work contractor do. Um, there will be limestone dust, fine spread around. Um, prior to that being completed, there is certainly clean up to be done with the, I mean, especially the, the section in front of the first rest area in New London Lane. I mean, you see the wheel rods and up and down. So, um, what, what you identified tonight had been observed. Um, the acting contract is still open. The contract is possible to deliver a satisfactory project. Um, and that's, that's what intended is intended to be done there. Uh, he does a work.
It just, if I might comment, it does appear that this, he doesn't have the expertise, I mean, in the way of this done. Thanks, thanks for listening. Don't mean to be a.
Thank you for your question. So it's, it's good to, to hear what people are seeing. And I do think we're expecting it to be nice.
I mean, our observations are similar to the.
If I could partner, I mean, if you want to go there together or do something like that. Thank you so much.
As I say, but, uh, um, borough is conducting a survey about Dark Hollow Woods. And, uh, I think that Phyllis probably.
Good. We were just told a little bit about that earlier today.
QR code, wait, try it again. Have you heard there's a problem with?
I heard there's a problem, but when I tried to this work and all you have to do is enter this information into the browser. Okay. Or you can go to our website and there's a link.
Nine, five, six, two, six, six, nine. And my wife is also writing up, uh, our comments and said that, yeah.
And Mr. Sigler, we're, um, just in this last few weeks have created a new Dark Hollow Woods committee that's going to be working on this and there's going to be a lot of people involved in it.
Oh, great.
And we'll, we're happy to have other residents that might be interested in joining us for special projects and whatever may come up. So I think Patty will probably give you a lot of information about that.
Yeah, yeah. And as Madam President, they requested information about the committee prior to this council meeting tonight. I do have your name that you're interested in being a member of the Dark Hollow Woods Committee.
I might put a good, but Phyllis has been so helpful. I mean, I call, she follows up and does such a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for coming. Okay, um, our next item is the, um, minutes. And we have our minutes from the July seventeenth regular meeting. And, um, there was one change to the drafts that you received, which is, uh, the names of the people from the public, um, which was Blights Dolan and Kelly Rohr. And, um, you've already made those changes, I think, or not. Okay, we're going to make those changes. Yeah. Did anybody have any other changes or comments? Yeah.
Mine's in twenty-eight. I don't believe I seconded my own motion. And if I did, I, I don't think it was legal. So I don't know who seconded it, but someone must knew.
Anybody else have a correction? Or comment? Okay. So we'll address this at our next meeting. And the appointed boards, we have some payments to make motions regarding. Can I take a huh? Oh, this is more worse. Okay, I'm skipping right in. So the two partial payments, do you want to talk about these or?
And your package is a recognition lens and solar for two more payments due. How they selected for the LED project on the Boulevard. These are typically paid through serious B bonds through the out to the contractor. I'm not going to take the funding out, but you can get about the project is, I can tell you that we have our work order for Duke and like was finalized yesterday. So that means that I think we now have a working meter and we could mention that power to that. Network and that you can explain what that means. And these will be separate action items that councils meeting in three months, in two months from now. I'll go for that. And I hope, so again, when you get down to twenty six hundred and four forty eight, what's that going to leave left in the project is? Two percent for closeout?
Yeah, so we've held five percent so closeout. They haven't built. We have some additional to build. Trial number that I think is probably around fifty thousand like to pay between payment and work that. So eight percent of the total contract. And just to clarify, it's the reason we go off to, it submitted last month, right after.
So what, what did you say though about when the light's going to be turned on?
Okay, so everything's connected with the process to care, but it's the better where several steps. So the initial step was done, they did approval, their design, that's sort of saying, second step was to make physical connection. Third step, and once physical connection is paid is to set up final billing and service. That's what's in progress now. So physical connection is done. So as long as or as soon as you can like establishes the service there from an administrative or paperwork perspective. And then turn the power on. We expect that to happen.
Soon, okay.
I thought we don't even know if the lights work technically, right? Because there's no power technique. They've been on yet. Okay, so there may be potential signs after that.
As I, I keep, the liquor store said, are you guys ever turning these things on? No, so I go, okay, I'll ask. So, okay, so we're still sort of at the soon, not with any definite thing.
Yeah, so it's indicating can lights can, the contractor has done his work at this point. It's subject to punch lists and checking everything and all that restoration is done, they're connected. It's, it's.
Okay.
From rest of the appointed boards, the only other item which would be part of his engineering report will be the recreation part component with the grant discussion later that will still have under. And the minutes are also include your package from the latest Boulevard project report.
Did you all notice that they decided to allow pet walking on the trail? That they haven't had any trouble in the six month trial period. And so they're going to let it, which is very surprising. And, and people seem to be happy about it. So, so that's going to happen.
I had a, a, a rare inquiry asking, when do we put bikes on that trail? No. It's all right. It's all safe. Under administration, Sean, while you have a floor, you can start your report, please.
Good, thank you. Do a number of items tonight. Try to be efficient here and.
Ether, so they have everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we give a lot of grant discussion activity. We've got a lot of grant activity even in the last thirty six hours. So some updates to what, what was in here, what was published last week. So. Allegheny Boulevard lighting, we just talked about, I don't believe I have any, anything further to add there. Process is actually complete. So I mean, first make contact if you feel like we need the power and the account set up. So hopefully maybe completion there. And that's for permit in the details. So progress report is due at the end of September, September thirtieth, as they are every year. Council is okay with it. I'd like to do the same that we did last year. With typical annual presentation, just an update, the September workshop meeting to get their status of fitness or permit. And I can include that in my engineer's report. Thanks, fun. It's okay with council. Does check one of the boxes for your Republican case involvement as far as permit compliance. The other thing is not in here, it's finished last week. Was we have completed the outfall screening for this year or intensity that last week. Plum Creek Interceptor Project. Work is tangentially complete there. You've submitted a closeout request and a bit of an H O P for work on Plum Street. Closeout requests pending. They have built at this point all the work up to forty five or seventeen. Going to be. Work is complete there. I think later on I noticed there's final change where those are that project. I think I brought this up a couple of months ago. We did find some savings in that. We had a few missing links, the CCTV videos. There were some big repairs that were assumed in the bid. We actually didn't need to do, but our contractor televised a move line. So there was some savings there. You see reflected in the final change. Third Street and Holton, talking about the grant application as being grants, but it, last month's meeting council authorized authorized signage upgrades, track control to complete. We are coordinating with them to have those done. Those are the overhead signs, bridge coming towards the borough in front of the Magic Store. We out of the world. Twenty twenty two storm water improvements, Holden Road, this unfortunately is the same update as last one. Still waiting to close out that permit back and forth with them. Again, they've made a big sacrifice of paintage. We've been done closeout. Twenty twenty three roadway improvement program substantially complete and with finished paving two weeks ago. It'll find a lock through with them. Project closed out, but work is substantially complete towards twenty twenty three roads. Plum Creek Trail, we just talked about, you know, I'll reiterate the council, the concerns here, we're going to notice. Did he tell us as well from the partial record, a discussion we gave about them. Superb results, the contractor, make sure everybody knows, do not consider that being finished products.
What percentage of projects you think has been done?
It's hard to say. I mean, if if we didn't need this cleanup, eighty five, with the cleanup, probably. Hard to say seventy. I mean, all the materials there and that sort of thing, just need some massaging into a finished one.
Do you think that the standard that you're setting for the finished product is, can be met by this contractor? Do you have to set the standard? Does he know what the standard is? Because the, Mr. Ziegler was saying that he was questioning the skill of the contract.
And as you know, as far as we don't do a huge contractor, you take open a little bit. Now, he does need to meet the specification. Trail of certain width, installed at certain depth, restoration around it. Short answer, yes, he, he has to be in the performance criteria to the specs.
And so you've already met with him or?
It was discussions. I'm meeting with him beginning of next week, Monday to walk the trail with them again and point out. In fact, would say about a meeting time.
Has he submitted a bill for that work?
Submitted partial payment of its last case.
And we haven't paid it though yet, have we?
Counsel approved, but the payment's up in May.
Do you have any recommendation that what we do with that?
I mean, we do owe him payment in some work has been done to certain extent. He does have materials there. I think it's appropriate that we meet with him Monday.
It's our experience, just particularly.
His handful of other projects with us now supported in general, okay, he's rather, he's a relatively small outfit. It's just him and a few guys. So he doesn't have the kind of bruising work force to come. I haven't seen poor quality work to date. Up to now. But in small personal experience, he hasn't had his own. So that's a trail. Plum Creek Garage. There by Riverside Park. So council will recall, and this is time jogging and then grants, there was a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar grant awarded last year G E D F funding. That's back forth with. Allegheny Valley North Cog, because they're really a big project owner here, just like our C D B G projects, they're the they're the contract over and maybe five. So I had some discussions in June, July with them, with county advisor scope setting contracts. I think I got a call a couple of weeks ago before I was vacations from the cog to say, hey, we're, we're ready to bid, send yourself. Previous understanding was we were waiting for contracts to be signed for all of this. So long story short, Scott and I met with Tony DeScola last Friday. We are pulling together bid documents, we've indicated to the cog that we think we can have that to the next week. Proceed. So scope here to make sure that we're all connected as well as we finalize those bid documents is repurposing of the current basketball court to be re pickable quarters inside the track going down there. So not repaving, some of my tumors repairs where there's deficiencies in the asphalt, but not cell repaving. Recolor code, make a bigger ball court, take down the basketball, let's put up the nets. And then we'll close in the fourth side of the bench. It's a three side of bench now. So the fourth side will be closed. Proposal and discussion with export is to not have separators inside. There'll be three ports just in the area there to try to package the money so that we have enough then to immediately replace the basketball. I think we talked in this board to, the concern was we didn't want to have some sort of lag between getting rid of basketball and having pickleball and then. So second part of the bid will be construction of the basketball court at the standing on third street at the front right corner, here where the, the batting cages are between that cocky and the. Bid there would be asphalt basketball court and hoops, no fence around that. I may funding a little offense, I think it can be done later. Going to include an alternate, that alternative big price to come in for a vision, an outdoor kitchen type area. It's just going to be the concrete pad for now and supplement, and then a walk away from the entrance way there. The other accommodation that's been requested to kind of make in the future. It was talked about this, Tony may have presented, it actually is kind of a long term goal for an enclosure or a roof. Like better term than basketball. So obviously that's not within scope of the funding that's here and done a full design for that. We're going to look to make accommodations to set up our foundations of the basketball court. Wouldn't need to be disrupted in the future. I'd bid that as an alternate as well. We can look at price and if the numbers are high, everything doesn't go. So we are finalizing those bid documents. Sure, we started telling you to share with you guys as well. So we kind of know expectations. There is certainly uncertainty in bidding paving work at this time of the year. I mean, after even June or so, and it's not even a weather thing. It's all the favors have gathered all their work. Sometimes there's something paid for itself. I think we proceed with, the cog's ready to go. So just want to make sure we all have in our head though, and we may need to make a consideration if we get a really high bid, it may be better to rebid in spring. Just so we know at kind of time of year.
Big questions out there.
Sure.
First. Are we awaiting anything from the county?
My understanding, this is my conversation abroad. Yes, the, you have something sent over to the contracts person. I haven't seen them, but I'm just giving you up there.
Yeah, the second question is, do we think the cog can do this in an expeditious manner?
Well, their role in it really is just is just putting it out in the bid. I mean.
Yeah, can they do that in an expeditious manner?
I think so. All I need to do is advertise, I need to go to a meeting and yes. My point a minute ago, this time of year is not ideal for bidding paving work. I think we proceed with. I think from talking, I mean, actually you may know better from our firsthand experience at the cog meetings. I think they have other projects that are in this G E D F final that are getting paid this time anyhow. So we're finishing that with them. So I, I think they're teed up. First step went out is my understanding and they're teed up for a second set here in the upcoming weeks.
That's one question too. I, I noticed in here that there's something written about trail improvements at the park. And I went to their ADA meeting and whoever brought it up, John, I think, about that trail, the, the kind of gravelly trail that runs closer to the river. That that's, that's what's being paved now under this.
You can include that as an option. So when we submitted this grant application, it's probably this time last year, last September or so. We left this intentionally wide. We were still kind of working through Chateau B's over there. So the way this grant was framed was Earl Parks, sports courts and trail.
Okay.
The thought is if we focus on the scope I described, the pickleball and the basketball, that's probably going to be. If we'd like to bid as an alternate, include paving that trail below, certainly can, then you'd have the option to see numbers and it really doesn't change them. You know what it is and, and if there were local funds to contribute, that's okay too. I mean, you're not.
It has been on this list for four years and the, the reason I bring it up was at that meeting, they were bringing up that it's along the tra, the trail's one thing, but then it's access to the concrete pads of the pavilion areas that people have to really manhandle a wheelchair to get somebody up into the pavilion. And so it, not everybody can do that. And so they were really concerned that this trail paving would include kind of a ramp or whatever it is. Up towards so that once they're there, they have access in and out of the pavilions and I personally would like to see us, if we need to come up with funds from our general funds to add to this, because it's been a lot of years and it's, it's hard on me and people can't push their. it's hard on me and people can't push their base code and aren't supposed to push them on the track.
Because the idea is if you if you have an asphalt loop, we get that sort of thing off the body track and put it to service in the track. The G E D F is an annual grant too, and we talked about submitting again for this year's distribution. And see if we can enhance that money towards the trailer and sell it.
I don't think so, man.
So are here, I'll be.
Very, very specific.
Well, if you could maybe talk to him too about what my doing might have to be about that issue.
Sorry, good.
Um, before I move along, anything else on Riverside Park, an occurring G E D T F? Okay. Um, next is Holden Road and Ninth Street, this was the C F A award, um, this was two intersections of ADA improvements, signage improvements by the class of peakers. Um, surveys are scheduled for those that are proceeding, uh, that's D C E B, um, so that'll be a burrow bit, so that's that's one month a piece, it's, uh. Number eleven is brick roadway, there's, the opening was held, um, this morning. We had work contractors picked up, which I mentioned Scott was very, very optimistic last week, um, and the plan was put in by the moon, we had no bids moved. So, um. I shared, uh, I'm sure it's got sometimes different over into the brick repair. Um, but I would recommend if council's okay with it, is we immediately put it back out to bid. We advertise again, um, let's go through the process and then if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but in the scenario that we get no bid, if we do successive advertisements, we can then actively solicit a price from something, even though.
Yes.
Um, recommendation, council's okay with it, let's immediately put it out to bid, have it open again before we meet again. Sorry, so already been September and then we have a bid to award, but maybe you know that we're in a position, we can it's like a private entity, we'll reach out to contractors.
Can you remind me just to say what's going on on Sixth Street with the bricks right around like Maryland? Where it's like.
Yes, the the intent of that project is not wholesale, like replaceable road, it's spot repairs, we've got an area of the size of his desk that we can fix where it's pretty much okay, we can fix either these depressions that show up or the hump or the.
Yeah, that areas.
Would would this would this work be strictly brick repair? Or would it include the previous suggestion of paving over the crosswalks to eliminate the stop problems of vehicles kind of stopping and starting at intersections?
This scope was just an isolated spot of repairs, you can fix those really bad spots of dips or humps and. Fairway.
But you still think that to fix the worst spots at the crosswalks, the best thing is to pave over the crosswalks.
Some of those spots may be basically is too, is to fix those areas we have isolated incident. Um, so it's overlying there, we put that out the bid and see what happens and um, hopefully September can proceed one way. I'll I'll get it updated and and Scott, it is okay that we can. I think we have in the past before you ratify it, then we need to get it in the papers. Okay, yeah, I know I done this, if they they're riverfront trail, so we, um, Scott, a couple of weeks ago, took me out to look at actually maybe a couple hundred feet up from where the where the goats kind of hut tent was or is. Um, to a portion of the trail, the roots are coming to grow and it's pretty poor. So, we tried to solicit, um, letterbooks, um, thinking that this would be below bid limit of twenty-one and change, and there's quite always twenty-two, I think, um, only got one response back, um, they were of the twenty-eight five. Um, it was a little bit of work, a lot of overhead, the vocalization there, um. I I think for this repair, it's probably best that we lock this in with our scope. Um, council's okay with it, I think we include it again as an alternate to our Riverside Park, especially if we're going to include this other trail. We may get a good number then if there's more.
There's more.
Wanted, uh.
Is there any, um, trail work that's needed on the Arboretum Trail down through the.
I know they just did a whole bunch of cracks in the machine. And I think they posted the entire length of our grant, those set of conversations.
Work on some down leaks, we're thinking.
Yeah, um, and we had young blood last year, obviously, I don't know later this time last year, probably October, so last year, recall, yeah, those the road program. It's repairs.
The worst parts were the worst parts of Barbara your trail, which was really the main thing.
Riverfront Trail, Chateau Beach, I don't know, did you receive anything formal?
I signed, the state sent me a a general form of email on Monday and said sign this document, and I signed this to Chateau Beach, but I couldn't read what it said. But apparently, I know the previous issue was the extension to another year. I'm anticipating to say this was the scope change approval, but again, I think they got the same ballot. It just it just said, and now that we signed, I think they go with the state's sound, you can read it, but the domino effect was extend for a year, then approve scope change. And we did that part three months ago, so I'm hoping that's what it was, but again, once you click on it, the document disappears, we can go on.
Yeah, it's not a cancellation.
It was not a cancellation. It was a good, I was a good signature question.
It's okay, I'm gonna skip the three grant things on circuit, I do a lot to add to those. Um, C E B G projects are granted, obviously number four and five, so number four, see the notification because the, um, paperwork issued contractor in a certain payment number had been resolved. They've been issued a notice, proceed, they issue a, um, uh, we're to schedule pre-construction meeting for year forty-eight, so that work can begin completed this fall. Um, the second award is year forty-nine, those have been awarded, um, the grant timing started July first. Um, cog is working through grievance contracts from county, um, the second director reached out yesterday, he emailed, um, to everybody that it's got funding to confirm scope, um, I responded to him. They had believed to confirm sticker scope, we got the finding, he was asked for some refreshment, that's this ramp right outside the door here to move that to result water issue. And there's three on Allegheny Park. So Scott, we're gonna move forward with bearing bid documents, um, have them ready to go, so we don't have any same scenario with that with the G E D F, so there's the that one is moving. Hey. From a development perspective, the only quick up that I had, council person Friday asked or mentioned last month that the rain guard front of one place was old, we checked it a couple of times, actually, I looked at it after the meeting. Uh, but it it just rained, so conceivably it couldn't have been fully working properly, we checked it after it had been raining. Uh, we did provide notifications to the United States developer, I don't really change response yet. Um, they did submit last week, it provides stormwater layout for some of the on lock controls of the homes, um, so we'll include the comment in there again, it it isn't working properly, it's supposed to be, or it's not supposed to. Um, so we'll keep on them to give them. But there's a lucid, like, don't know, um, I'm hoping it's just a matter of they get too much sediment, silt in every construction, bottom is fine to that kind of seal it over, if you do some maintenance. Then I will circle back to grants, um. The table one, no real update, those are just ones that are in, that we're still waiting for approval, waiting for approval decision on small water and sewer and each two O P A, those are much from last December, um. An official word that we've gone is we're anticipating decisions September.
I can, I'll or I'll expand on the management report.
Okay, sorry, so we heard Romans are getting close to the best to, um, structure demo that's in. First two, one, taken two, we're also submitted again between publishing this and and Monday, so those were due yesterday. Um, this multi motor brands, next piece of Palm Creek Trail gap in front of Palino and Bridge Across the Stream and improvements at home and Third Street here, we need traffic restrictions placed. Um, those are the so discussion then moves to what's next, um, and there's been good update the last couple of days that I mentioned as far as definitive things for what's that, so the first one that we've known about for a couple of weeks, and I've mentioned to you actually throughout the year, the waiting for is statewide L S A. Um, that program was officially opened, um, published grant requirements, um, it opens as a official grant requirements were published, open September first, grants applications will do November thirty. Um, so that was kind of midterm here, I start talking about it, there is no required match, of course, if you match, you have a better chance of getting it. Um, this is the one that is a very, very broad and wide open scope, so infrastructure, recreation. The big one is different with, um, statewide L S A is vehicle and equipment purchases are eligible and building related by tax relief, plus any other grants turns on. So that one's up. The other one in that vein that we've been waiting for is G E D T F. Um, we got an email from the cog yesterday, that is hoping grant application submitted to the cog is between September first and September eight. Totally open for a very short window, um. The county's website has not been updated to requirements, but they've always been the same, so, um, Rob said there, you know, more commonly the portal setup, so this this one's gonna be a quick turnaround, submitted for the first week's number. Um, it's kind of a sister program, I guess, for lack of a better term, to to L S A, similar eligibility, but no vehicles, no equipment, no buildings. Um, just about anything else as it relates to infrastructure, stormwater, um, stormwater, recreation, those sorts of things.
So when you do these, when they become available to you, have we given you a list of projects that we'd like to do or things we'd like to buy? You go to, you refer to that list, then you apply for the grant, how does that work?
In in a less formal forecast, we probably should finalize that list as a place priorities, um. And I I have a handful of notes here that one of us who is refresher to talk about these in that vein, um.
Did you want to do that today?
Yes, yeah, and I have one more that's not on here, they've got an email about yesterday as well. Um, so AV and cog reached out too, so C D B G for this year is about to open. Um, Rob's email was just, um, feeler basically information coming, we did give some information to another, um, from another cog that applications for that are gonna open August seventh, so later in the week, there's usually about a month that goes by, and and for those that are not a huge, like, they submit a pre-application first. And that'll be the the smallest kind of eligibility still for the borough.
How competitive are they?
So, um, the the cog's been good as it relates to C D B G to kind of give everybody a little piece just about every year, I I know you guys have been pretty close to a two year cycle, um. They've been giving a little bit, they're not big swings, twenty, thirty, forty thousand. Uh, the focus for those though, that you guys would be eligible for is basically to get it with the ADA improvements, accessibility improvements, as we've done, when I continue the ramp program, program we can. Um, that's eligible and then structured damage, so move with length, so.
Could the ADA ramp money, rather than just right now, it's ramps are like cross sections, across, across walks. Could any of that be allocated to what Nancy was talking about, not Riverside Park? Or is that a separate issue?
Yes, yeah, I I'd like to look at, if you think, um, money is, they they usually don't give out big squads, but um, yes, I I think we can make the argument that that's a, their their term is removal architectural barriers is is the real category, it's yes, and especially as you described, Nancy, if you get to you know, platform for this, this, um, this pavilion, and it's it's not easy to get, it's obviously an architectural barrier, so that that could be an option if you want to pursue that route, pursuing.
Hillside counts architectural barrier.
Yes, well, the surface condition and all of that, I mean, it's not a, it's not an accessible surface to get there, um. Yeah, we we could certainly pursue that for C D B, I think that makes a lot of sense. Okay. Um, for sensibility, and then if if there are structured demos and you guys traditionally haven't done that, C D B G did for the, um, for the other specific demo project, the, you know, that one here. Okay, so these other grants. Um. A few things that I've had off the top of my head, Scott, I really didn't talk about this in advance, so. But in preparation for this meeting, so it it just my brain dump here, uh, the stuff that I know that's out there, so. Um, stormwater perspective, I know we talked about third in Washington, if we have a project there, and I think that'd be a good L S A one, um. Recreation improvements, if we perceive the next set of improvements in Riverside, these trails, um. There's been discussion about lighting, two other other improvements there, either of these funds would be good for that, um. The one that I skipped, email, I'll lay today, I guess I'll circle back to this, but stormwater improvements for Door Hollow Woods, um. I have some information here, I emailed it up, I don't think it's just, they were circulated to you.
Is that the fairway drainage?
Yes, below there, so, um. I mean, Brown figures it out all about this together, I think, um, put together a little concept plan, I did listen to Tom, swale, a burn, pipe it down the hill, under drains, some inlet autumn, ground numbers have a contract to put for in the country. Fifteen thousand dollars, yeah, so, um, from a, uh, talking discussion, both of the, not C D B G, but L S A, G E D T F, those would be eligible projects there, um. L S A, if we want to provide discussion about a public works facility, that that's the one we have no time on. Um, those were the ones that I had thought in my head here as far as just quick random. At least start discussion for grant application, and I think focus for tonight council wants to entertain some discussion is C D B G that I think we have a pretty good plan for. And, um, G E D T F, I'd have to prepare a resolution, you guys pass in two weeks, we get it on, we're it's September first, September.
Which, explain the last one again, the G B T V Q S D N.
So G E D T F, that is funding through county's casino money, basically it's gaming money, um. Goes through the cog, that's the funding we have in Riverside that I talked about, so that's recreation, infrastructure, not equipment, not buildings, so stormwater parks, recreation, trails, all that kind of stuff.
Where does the drainage, fairways drainage issue, where does it fall into?
That would fit in either of these categories.
Can you do both?
Yes, it would submit redundant to worse complimentary or supplementary applications in any of these topics.
What's did you date this maintenance?
So G E D T F goes to, um, the cog, they have requested they be in by I think it's September seventh or eighth, so quick turnaround with decisions yesterday, um. I sometimes I know that they, like, if you look at Allegheny County Economic Development Site, they don't even have the stuff out there. So, um, but as of now, best information we have is five weeks from today.
What would you need from us?
Um, your concurrence that you want to proceed this project or with this grant application for these grant applications, you know, many communities submit multiple, you don't want to over them, you know, we submit thirty. Not going to take your very favor, we we have, you know, two or three, especially if they're different worlds, the park project or really tonight, just concurrent to, let me work with Scott, put together cost estimates and. Put together cost estimates and framework and get a reservation.
So the fairways issue for the um, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, would there be a a thorough match that we'd have to have in our budget?
No, so both the CFA and GE BTF do not explicitly require a match. You can match in many cases, it makes your application favorable for the funding committee. Funding agency, but there is not, there's not a requirement for that.
Okay, so are we basically creating a wish list then that we're? Okay, we're not committing to anything, but we could give. Yeah, I mean, to get, you know, four or five different things that people might.
Yeah, I just fixed them one now too. Well, I'm saying now, uh, from a main from an operational maintenance standpoint and ADA safety standpoint is. Riverside playground structure still uses traditional. Playground mulch for its landing surfaces. Every risk expected that's a thickness of them. Every risk to buy truckload of stuff. They make those rubberized surfaces where you put it on one time, the application's there. They do them in decorative. Colors and features, and that's a one time. Deal. It's it's zero, it's almost zero maintenance.
But I would say it was just not a part of the news. I have this underwriting. Comments later that there's a bunch of places where there is the ro- rubber engine that's supposed to keep it between the mulch and brass and there are rusty. Landscaping things out of them. I'm trying to kick them back in. Yeah, um, but they.
Trees that fall moves the the mulches.
Yeah, I think that was supposed to be much delivered this year. I haven't noticed.
It says that's what happens. I mean, that's what happens. It's. Merely the same thing. They're closing the park all the time, getting down the mulch. These one place. I was talking about a ton of general. I mentioned at the one ADA we had its stiss.
Just maybe another dark.
No, 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 no. That's what needs to occur. Yeah, that's 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 even what the number four, how much are it cost?
Scott, Scott, can I enter? Can I say something? Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. From a GDF perspective, if you want to pursue that from a recreation perspective and. Makes our goals kind of recreation, but it's also infrastructure and stormwater. I don't think those are competing applications. That would be reason.
You know, when we started with Dark Hallwood Woods and they were talking about going out for grants. At that time, they were saying that we had to have our master plan in place. Before we could apply for certain grants. I don't know if that's all grants or some or.
From a comprehensive plan perspective or a parks plan or any of that. Um, the funding agencies look at these. Very few of them issued an explicit requirement, but if they're looking at a level of commitment from municipality. Thought this out, we've got some. Tune in here. It's not just kind of broken some walls there. That's.
And we should, we should have, we'll have some stuff by September that you could use to.
Yes.
Like drafts of some sort.
It doesn't even have to be the, you know, final product. Arthur and hey, we we have this big picture. Need some help with this.
Sean, I have a question and maybe unfair. So if it is, I'll I'll back down. When uh, when I was on Borough Council last time. We interviewed the different engineering firms and chose yours. And one of the things that made you so compelling was the fact that you. Proposed to us that you would be able to get us grants. And sitting here tonight, it's kind of exciting to see all these opportunities. Is it something that would be easy for you to do? To say since we've been your engineer, we have brought to the borough X amount of money through grants. Is that a a fair question?
Yeah, I mean, if you. Off the top of my head, I guess, the the GE BTF for Riverside Park, which was finally helping out. Hundred twenty five, it was funding awarded to the fire department. Either LSA or. Drive that across the whole room. Best across the horn, right? That was a hundred, was a hundred thousand dollar project, seventy thousand dollars plus thirty match. CD BG this year was the. The sort of middle of nine, three, forty, maybe eighty eight.
Well, I'd like to say thank you for providing us with these opportunities. It's.
Your best. It's. It's um.
That's what we were hoping for and you've really delivered. So thank you.
Thank you. I I appreciate that.
Scott, can you hear me? Sorry.
Tracy, we can't hear you.
You can't hear me, Scott? I tested my mic. It works. And so can the public. The public can hear me too.
If she can, so she's responding.
Yeah.
Maybe your speaker, this may have to be a different speaker. I mean, I I'm not restricting anything here.
Let's try to go on the YouTube.
No, it's.
Is that mute?
She's not muted. If you see her here, she's not moving.
Oh, it's on the YouTube. We can hear her.
Yeah, on YouTube, they can hear me.
Okay, Tracy, sorry.
We got you through my computer though. So if you talk now.
The player speaker is they have a different speaker. I mean, I don't know, they're strictly anything here.
Exactly, yeah.
But go ahead. If you if you speak now, we can hear. Is that mute? Well, I mute myself.
On YouTube, they can hear me.
Okay, Tracy, sorry.
We got you through my computer though. So if you talk now.
The player speaker is they have a different speaker.
Exactly, yeah.
But go ahead. If you if you speak now. Hold on, I'll just call. Tracy, can you just call back in?
I I'll try. Yeah, that's fine. I'll try.
Before. I cannot hear you now, Trace. But I could have heard you earlier.
Okay, let me try again. I'll try.
You want to try dropping the call and calling back in?
Yes, yes.
I'm just trying to join right, trying to join again. Okay, we'll keep this as a bag. Call back. It's on the air is there because YouTube can hear me. Everyone else can hear me. So the air is somewhere.
Yeah.
There unfortunately. Sorry, you were trying to talk to yourself. Okay, call me back. I guess I'll call you back.
We can still talk. Tracy, you know, obviously that we need to do make a list. Expect the competition. At least at the county level for grants.
So actually, yes, I talked about it. So let me try to. Make sure I'm at the right spot here. CDBG must pursue connection in Riverside Park to the. GE BTF. Just do. Now, I guess we quick turn around one. Do it September, suit dark hollow and some playground improvements. Here.
Generic.
Yeah, we'll sort out the details and bring it back to the mid month meeting. And then. Statewide LSA is the one that. November seemed like a long time. It's going on. It's going to be here pretty quickly. So if um. We want to start to formulate that wish list a little bit, since it's that broad scope of just about everything. Um, you can have some more constructive discussion next month. As far as we think the real desires are there.
Can you hear me now?
Are you talking, Tracy?
You hear me now? The volume on your computer, Scott.
It might have been for some reason.
No worries, um. No, no worries. I just want to go back to, I mean. Again, to echo what Patty said, um, I think that with the the engineer, the engineering firm, I think we're doing amazing. Just hearing it from here, it sounds like we're going to have a lot of competing priorities. With different members of council. So my suggestion for you, Scott, would be like, let to Dave's point, let's make a list. Let's look at these and then let's try to figure out from a strategy perspective, what makes the most sense because. I do think that we all have obviously different priorities and we all want to get different things done. And it just sounds like we need. We need to get on the same page and just prioritize. So that's all I wanted was trying to say. So thank you.
If I can still, let's see if we're talking about grants. I had the opportunity to. As part of my management board opening announcement, it's part of our session. Next, um, I did happen to have a conversation, impromptu conversation with Senator Costa's office. And he recognizes that we put two grants in front of him, one for the sewer centrifuge. And that project, which is, you know, in excess of about. Several million uh. Like a two point something like almost three million dollar project. And also the sewer line project, which was the about a four hundred, four and a quarter commitment. I'll give you Cliff Notes. Pick one.
It's obviously the more expensive.
Well, I did do that, but but conversely, within forty eight hours, I didn't even the Senator Lou, Congressman Lou's office. And we did our tour of the centrifuge. And the treatment plant and provided that office with all the information we would need to get that ball rolling at the federal level too. And they said they would run with it. It it fits within one of the programs they're looking at. Or um. Federal funding for appropriate, when the next time an appropriation bill comes up as well. So he's.
Okay, so you're saying the. Conversation with Senator Costa included the EQ tank.
Yeah, see, he thought the one was a heavy, one was one was a heavier lift than the other to state level.
Which one was which? I thought the EQ tank was the easier.
He looked at the number, who's the numbers? It was like the one, the one point nine versus the four, four and a quarter. The heavier lift was the one point nine based on everything that was sitting in front of them in the region.
So the smaller number is.
The smaller number was the more attractive.
More track.
For him, for that office. I'm gonna say at the same time, I've ever part of Lou's office and reinforced. The the larger project, small plant operation.
Well, my sense is in our conversations with Joe Rukowski, that the EQ tank is. Sort of at the top of the list of the things that we are not. Already guaranteed funding through bond. So is it possible to separate? The centrifuge. And just get the EQ tank working on that grant and then potentially increase chances of getting that.
Was it lumped or was it separated? I forget. I think there's a separate number.
But was it small grant? Which was the.
The EQ times about eight hundred thousand bucks.
And then there was the large grid.
Right, so if. If it's easier to get some, which is, I'm sorry, the EQ tank. Which is Rukowski's priority.
Yeah.
And that's the smaller of those two. Then I would think we need to.
I can give him that number in that. Project.
I mean, I know Joey's always said it'd be great to have a centrifuge, but it's not his.
You said.
Priority item on that.
I just want to add that the conversation was breaking up a bit.
I think it's great if we could get. Federal funding.
Or any funding to help with the pushing, yes. There were. But for the for the Congress's office, I gave him copy of the billing statement. We put the the narrative, we put out with the bill. On what the the bullet points, why the rate was increasing, but was still less expensive. PowerPoint presentation I gave, gave the council in order to do the bond movement. And then ultimately, the entire grant application that lens was solely prepared for the at least state level application. So they have all the narratives there and the budget numbers too. So they have a good idea what it costs.
So, I mean, I.
It's.
I'm just one person, but it strikes me that the EQ tank. Is the cheaper, the. And the one we needed most, so.
Okay.
I I didn't pull up there.
Yeah, I love it.
If you want to be at least. Okay, so we we carry. We carry this forward the passage numbers, obviously. So. We did the the grant for buying EQ tank and centrifuge to one point nine million dollar request is fifty fifty max. For contingency and all that, the EQ tank.
The one point nine hundred and fifty fifty grant?
Yes. So we're three point eight million dollars. Total, total project. The EQ tank just constructed with one point two. Centrifuge was effectively two point two was the brick down in this frame. So. You may be able to ask a wordless lesson. And oftentimes it was. So.
Okay. Anything else was right in there?
I don't think so, no. Questions obviously have to answer.
I have a question.
Yes.
The between Pennsylvania Avenue and Virginia Avenue on Eleven Street. Is a section of road that has been fairly newly paved. I can't tell you what. What generation it was, but it hasn't been that long. There, there were um, a series of small. Potholes at the very center of the road. And our street crew, Josh, repaired those potholes. I happened to see him working and I stopped to talk with him and he said that. You know, he thinks he knows what happened. And he diagnosed it as, and I I can't. Do constructions speak, so I. He said something to the effect that whatever the machinery was that was being used. Must have. Dropped something or something in the truck. Caused a situation that has allowed this to happen. Now those potholes have been filled. And so instead of going down into the potholes, you're going up. Over.
I I looked at it the other day when you mentioned it. It has an inverted crown down the center and it's about maybe hundred, hundred fifty feet long. Soaking wet. Before the rainstorms came. There's one yard drain. It looks like it's coming off a wedge curve, but. Off the edge, but it's coming out and sure as opposed to staying because it's inverted crown. But I'm wondering if the spring is pumping underneath. That's that's their right, but it's it's it was soaking wet last week before all the rainstorms had happened. So.
I don't know. It's just neighbors.
It's it's quite, it's quite obvious. You you can't miss it. You can't. It's it's a nice rectangle section. Oh, just five hundred, hundred fifty feet long.
Sorry, I don't know. It's right eleven Pennsylvania.
Yeah. It's it's closer to Pennsylvania.
Hey, I just pulled the road paving history back. It looks like last week. Catch all January twenty ten and twenty fifteen. You know, you can see.
Yeah.
There's something to be friends that.
Thank you.
One of all water.
Or something. Um, okay, so listen.
I am going to keep it very brief. Um, and. It's wanted to note that Zodi and Harry Ward is going to need a week from tonight. Uh, so that's Monday, August seventh, and that's just for the purpose of adopting and finding back to including the law. Regarding the challenge to. Part. So that liberty challenge that I already voted on at a prior meeting, that was going to be. The findings.
So this was the forty five day period extending.
Yeah, the forty five day period is up, I think, August eleventh. So. Um, they'll be in advance of that. They'll issue their determination at that time. There should not be any activity during that period. It should really just be coming in. Having a vote and then everybody going home. That's the goal. Um. I have a conflict that night. There will be someone from my office here. August seventh, next Monday. Yeah, we come yesterday. Yes, today's Tuesday. Yeah, so.
There was no possibility. Test immunity hearing.
No, the jury's closed. Everything's done. Vote been taken. So I I did tell Scott, I'm recommending that my office here to the case that he comes up that needs to be addressed. But it it should. Be short. That was just. That's that was on the agenda for for the. Anything else? You nothing? Um, no, thank you.
Handful of items from my management report. First, starting today, we're in our new insurance policy of the year. Um, we are still with MRM. One of the county members of the trust that that does our coverages, both for the actions, general obligations of the borough, as well as. Property, liability, and vehicle. Um, the only deviation this year is the Philadelphia Insurance Company. Who traditionally covered volunteer fire companies, liability operations and that sort of thing. Cease to provide that type of policy anymore to any fire industry. ceased to provide that type of policy anymore to any fire industry, uh, entity. So we had to offer bids and solicit and private, which is a company known for its insurance coverage packages. The fire departments will be covering the, the fire department this year for specific guidance that we don't already cover. Um, in total, it was about a four and a half to five percent increase of the life premiums. Um, which is standard that we've seen across the trust itself. I did complete the, uh, professional development academy's leadership program this past week. Um, in the upper, uh, the eighty ninth percentile of completing all the tasks, I received a certificate. No, there were things there that, um, refreshed me, but. No, it was a good perspective, um, of the group board, I think I was one of the older members, I, I was only CA of the entire group. Everyone else was department heads and I'm CA and so. Why is the manager, I like my departments to do so, so it was, it was a good perspective, um, and enjoyed the classes. It was intense, uh, as a, as a gift, I received a copy of General Colin Powell's second book on the leadership, yes. I did reach out to the President of the Trade Home President. After your discussions with him, I followed up with those discussions. Uh, it turned out he is a neighbor of mine from my old neighborhood. He did say that and, and when he totally threw me off my game and reminded me of that, I think I was expecting that at all. Um, but I did discuss with, uh, but as an entity, the board discussed about an obligation for the Presby home. More than willing, more than transparent, and he says, I gave him the number, he's gonna come back from his board of directors and let us know. It was very favorable, very positive and optimistic.
Based on his occupancy, that number.
The number we talked about, yes. I did participate in the most recent swap meeting online, uh, which is the culmination of the minutes in your packet for later review or discussion. At that meeting, I did invite Vaw based on their willingness to come and speak to council. I believe we lined them up for September work session to do their presentation. At that same work session meeting, I believe Nancy, I'm correct, the representative from the Allegheny River Boulevard Preservation was gonna present. So now we can talk about the entire quarter in total. Um, I'm gonna follow up with Vaw though to confirm if any, any presentations or handouts in anticipation of that meeting.
The other gentleman, I think, is pretty quick presentation.
Yes, I agree.
We have to put him first on the agenda.
No problem. All the performance evaluations are in from the departments. I have them in my office, I'm sorting, not reviewing them, I know Tracy, we put an agenda together. Start reviewing them and moving forward because the budget is starting to begin. I did have the opportunity to meet the new director of the RCAC. Her, her line of work is she has a degree in nonprofit fundraising. Definitely tell for me, all the board members from the RCAC at one time, they're very, uh, they have, they have energy. Some good energy going now, they had great energy before, but now it's like a, a new set of eyes on everything. And, um, they're looking to get forward and moving forward and progressing. We are going to lend out some assistance instead of the QuickBooks account, um, I donated Brian to them for a couple of times, I've all, all told him. But we are gonna meet together, yeah, coming, I think, next, if not this week, it's next week. Just to see what they have and how they can start on the way forward with their accounting and their software work. Um, I talked to you already about Senator Costa's office as well as the, uh, representative from Congressman Loser's office, I'll skip over that. Um, Brian, I have already started the twenty twenty fourth budget. We are going to meet, so the account is gonna be moving forward. I can tell you this, this, he's got the format already set up for the calendar year. What we specifically looked at was the, uh, collective bargaining wages, so we know what to anticipate. Um, maybe your estimates because this waste water treatment plant and the streets contract is a July contract. And we did anticipate a full-time officer coming in. Plus annual shoot dates because some individuals take steps, which means there's more for budget and obligation. As well as some taking steps also getting from jet now, so they started doing those moves, so. Brian has this paranoia, I think, of a high schedule, I think, or actually balanced schedule, he just doesn't remember last year. And when we hit those days, we'll assume this can be Monday nights and assume we're gonna walk the same thought process like we did last year, yes.
Since we're coming up on budget season for shortly. We get a firm commitment from Presby. Of an actual number.
I believe it's gonna happen before, if not the end of this week, by next week.
And secondly, they need some people who've been involved in the, David, myself. Once we have a firm number to meet with PMs and get a firm number from them as to what it will cost to add this to the sewage and waste.
That's one of the things that I talked about in my meetings, yes.
Okay, probably on a different, we're on a different timeline to talk about funding. That line item from the end, the budget question, sorry, not. I mean, we want to have this in place, I guess, so we can actually, the third, we're definitely the fourth quarter.
So that's a different time, this is more expedient, the timeframe is something, and is like, is, you know, the, the world for twenty twenty four.
I just, and I wanted that to be sort of the forefront of.
That's what it is. That's what it is.
To go out to all the apartment building and things like.
We did have a hatch did, as the pre-construction meeting for the pump station here with the two contractors. He's speaking passive voice, the contracts are signed and executed, they receive the notice to proceed. They are, the contractors have already placed the orders for the equipment that go into the pump station to make the rehabilitation complete. There was at least an eight to twelve week lag time on that, on that turn around, so the orders have been all in for over a month. Um, we expect, um, the drop, the deadline to complete the work is by February twenty twenty four. But they're anticipating starting, um, maybe late fall, definitely through the winter, they can do it. So that, that is probably, it's just waiting up for equipment, so you start to move. And Hatch was invited to come in September, probably the regular, not necessarily work session. Joe, Joe has, um, given the opinion that they, they, Hatch's timeframe is definitely have drawn Friday before the end of the year for putting on the sewer plant up a bit. That's their goal. And they think that they're, they're more than confident they can make that call. I didn't have a regular staff meetings between, uh, Bill's and I, as well as Brian Weekly. Sean, I meet weekly, but we also, we did our big Friday tour of the borough. Looking at straight stormwater issues in the Commons that have been raised by Tracy and some other residents. So we'll be addressing that, we are invited to meet with the Commons about the Burke Street drainage. And there's one other, oh, I did reach out to Reverend Byron, who is the spokesperson for the, for the fairways. Um, I didn't send it or draw it, the fair was conceptual plan, I said it's, I need to talk to Vice, it's too hard to explain over fun. So when I get a hold of her, I can at least talk to her about what the conceptual plan is for stormwater work. That is upset, it's essentially unfair, it's property, so we have to show what we need to do. And that's why I have my, my report from the management office.
So my snicker was that everyone is so afraid of the manager, you are what the ICMA to listen.
Use the basis, I have a one.
Just to let you know, we collected over fifteen tons of glass from the permanent glass recycle dumpster. And also to remind everyone that the permanent glass recycle dumpster moved to the dead end of An Street. We're still getting calls about that, I'm attempting to get a sign made, but, uh, Ray Rogers just came back from vacation. I'm working with Iron Mountain to set up a paper shredding event. We've had this for three years now, the paper shredding event will be in October. Hopefully it'll be the first October of the month, all of the dates in September were already taken. So we're waiting to hear back from Iron Mountain. And the harder recycle event where people can take paint, glass, uh, like fluorescent light bulbs, um, chemicals that are in your household down to the second street parking lot. That event will be held on Saturday, August fifth, from nine zero AM to two PM. Plenty of, uh, spaces are available, so we encourage everyone to go in line and make your reservations. Our electric vehicle charging stations, they're generating some revenue. We had over ninety nine total session hours with all three chargers in the month of July. I'm sorry, this is the month of June, uh, we saved over one hundred one gallons of gasoline. There was over one hundred thirty hours charge and the number of hours occupied was one hundred sixty. So even though a car was parked in a charger, it doesn't necessarily mean they were charging. The car could have been full and they were still parked there, or they could have been parked there overnight. Happy to announce that I just learned that the House State Committee, the PA State Committee on Transportation will be coming to visit our charging stations sometime in August. I have been finalized the plans yet, but they're on their way. And Nancy asked for the code enforcement report, which is the only report that I put into the packet. It has a list of code enforcement items we've been working on since October of twenty two. If you're looking at it, we have the address or parcel number, what the status, whether it's complete or still in progress. The reason for this being a code violation, the report date, the date by date, and the date that it was closed. The numbers sixty five that you see in the far right column, that is the amount that's charged by the IU and that invoice number is far to the left. So if you look at our chart, we only have a couple of notice of violations that are still being abated. And it starts with, um, the one that's on Plum and Belly Street with the car that's parked on the property, but it generally takes about a week or two for us to get our code enforcement violations up to date, and Nancy, I'm not sure if you wanted to see anything else in the report.
Yeah, I, I think we were just, just so people are aware of what's going on and do anybody have any questions about any of those?
Phyllis, with the code enforcement, do you find, um, there's any pattern as far as the violations found by the code enforcement officer? Or is it citizens, uh, contacting the office to report violations? He's not proactively going out to search for code enforcement violations. We were supposed to go out on Monday, but I was off on Monday, so we were not able to drive around. The main way that we receive reports is citizens calling in to report something, um, overgrown leaves. Cracks in sidewalks, cracks on the street, tree limbs down. But these are inbound calls and not the code enforcement proactively going out to look for them. The reason why I wanted to go and ride around with him is to get him to proactively look to see some of the violations that I see when I'm riding around town. Number one, signs in the borough right away and signs on telephone poles. So hopefully I could get him to be more proactive about it. Do we have a contract with them that would list what the expectations are of the borough? As far as driving around, uh, once a month or whatever, i- is there such a thing as a formalized contract with them? We do have a contract with them, I haven't seen it in a little while. But, um, we only have him one day a week and not even the entire day. So we'll give him the list of violations, so go look and see what's going on. Submit the notice of violation, give us a copy of the file. And then we'll find out if it's abated, if it is, then we'll put it to the side, if it's not abated, abated, then we'll go to the next steps, which include, um, citation at the magistrate. We have not been to the magistrate with the IU as of yet, since they've been, uh, third party contracted with the borough. So things have gotten resolved before having to go to that step, do you mean? Ninety nine percent of the notice of violations have been resolved.
There's so many codes, scope of the code enforcement officers so broad, you can't really expect him to do like policing action, but the best way to do it is to have citizen complaints and then follow up. Which I guess is what you're doing now. It would not be reasonable expected to patrol borough and, uh, you know, know every, everything that's a violation of code that would be almost a twenty four hour, seven day week job.
I think one of the difficulties for a code enforcement person is that, um, and for us, is that a lot of neighbors don't wanna call and report the neighbor. You know, there's a hesitation about bringing the law down on your neighbor and, um, so sometimes it does take us, any, any one of us or whoever to know this from, to pass them on.
It doesn't hurt because, you know, I always say, we don't have a full-time inspector, sixty six hundred inspectors, that's the borough residents. There are things that you may look at the yard for seven or eight times and not see what the other person's saying, because it's also angles to, and it has changed since I was a code officer. Right of entry on the pieces of property, things like, for the bullseye of ice field, look at the way, but back in the nineties, I can't do now. It's, 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 you proactive is where you can find stuff that's the obvious. And that's, that's not bad and, and we're the proactive ones, we see things that say, hey, let's tell them, we'll see, we'll catch this stuff. I, I have, you know, I try to reassure residents, you know, you just give us your information so we can come back, let you know what we see and give you an update. As opposed to, I don't even hear my name. And then three months later, the person throws, hey, well, we couldn't update you, you went to a city block.
I'll differ or just defer action on it.
That's a, that's a new one for me. Probably, there's a couple of deferred ones, yeah, what does it mean by says deferred? Not to put you on the spot, um, I didn't mean, because I don't know what I mean by that.
Ends up being one of ours, like a street parking that gets put into.
Oh, yeah.
That's maybe what, a lot of times we get complaints, scar park in the yard becomes code, which is on the street. It comes out, that may be, there's three or four of them, parking wise, if we don't know.
These are what, abandoned cars?
Abandoned cars, cars out of inspection, out of registration.
You'd be surprised.
And some of these, um, a number of them, even like back on the first page, on the completed date, there's no date entered there.
Yeah, our system was new, so the same system that we use for the work orders for the street department, parks department, wastewater treatment plant, it's the same system that we use for code violation at the very beginning. Everyone was new, there was a learning curve. So back in September, October, even May of twenty twenty two. That was when we first started using the system.
And so you just, nobody just posted that it was completed, is that true? Yes, and then like, um, seven oh six Fourth Street says in progress. Yes, it is, and it just still is.
Well, that's, there's, if you see something like that, it's a history behind, we don't have an issue taking.
What did you just say?
Sometimes if you see something that's truly, truly odd, because it's a unique code for the issue. But it's actually a piece of property that we think just got resolved in the next, that we resolve in the next week.
Really soon.
Really soon, the new property owner and their own self, self-composed timeframe on fixing the property.
And the closing was this week on my property and the proposed owners, they're going to start working on it as soon as possible. They're getting a dumpster permit so they can clean it up before they get all the building permit information.
The previous owner was a flick that went back. In short.
There was the meet and fleet that we partnered with the library, uh, we worked down on the, uh, walking trail of Edgewater to read a story with the children. That turned out exceptionally well, that was very. I was very happy of the number of attendees that came out for that program. That was good. Everyone's looking forward to having that program next year. And also um Scott went to make sure everything was correct with one twenty-eight Sixth Street. We had an issue with the removal of a stump, but to my knowledge, the stump is ground down and we should be able to proceed with the work there.
That was the true order. Six, the major relief.
Man, that's all I have. I, I wanted to add one thing of his thought before, I had a couple of different people tell me that you were a very good children's book reader at the library.
Um, I would appreciate the staff who's helping out with the library and your functions, but I might read last week too. I, I don't know why, I'm just, I'm just very proud of the fact that we were asked to participate in the reading program. I liked doing it. Yes, I did enjoy it. Um, but I'm just happy to see that we could help, you know, it's, it's, I would call it one of our divisions or departments, but they're a unique bodies and unique staff. Great leadership with both Karen and, and Beth there. I felt really good, you know, literally within, within less than seven days, she's doing an event at the library, I'm doing an event at the library, Mike's been at the library.
Yeah, I didn't say, I finished off, I'm going to sleep.
Well, I, I started going, it's like, this is not quit. I can't be this entertaining. Nothing of weird. So, but no, it's, it's, I enjoy it. I'm, I'm happy to, I'm proud we do it. And I keep telling Karen, do not hesitate to call us some more times like that.
It's good P R, I think. It's a nice way for people to
I, I mean, this dog could be boring. It's funny, I read a book during the day and said, come on back. Oh, okay. Sometime, Monday, right? Thank you, Phyllis. Um, in your package, the department report, I know Jason expanded on his discussion journal, what, what the goal and the intent of that report is supposed to be. Um, I will grant it with, with technology that can help that report expand and become better. Um, we'll talk about that at another point in time after we collect all the other thoughts. Um, the second item is a special item, social media policy update.
It's a street partner report. I don't see that.
It, you know what? You know what? I apologize. It was scanned and I did not move it over. I apologize. I will send it separately. That is, that is, thereon my, I got sidetracked after I scanned it and then put in the folder for Phyllis. Now I'm looking, no, it's not here. I apologize. I will send it separately tomorrow. Does it say there? Okay. Um, social media policy, we left this here. I know Tracy sent a separate cover for us to discuss later this evening. Is that what um, Tracy, are you okay to talk about?
Yep, as long as you can hear me.
Now we can, yeah.
Okay, yeah. So, so obviously this was a little bit bigger project than I anticipated because it began with just the social media per, um, perspective, but then we're adding the communications piece onto it. Because I do think like with the communications that the borough sends out via text message and everything is important and we need to capture that in this draft. We also need to capture not only the employees, but some of our subcommittees and everything that kind of like is an arm of the borough. So that's why it's still kind of in draft format that we're going to look at, we're going to review. I've been working with a select, a couple of people on it. And then obviously Kate, we still have to get it to you um for like the whole legal, legal review. And maybe we do separate it at one point in time, but I do think that it should be all encompassing because then we're going to have another piece for Amanda, which is going to be almost like she's going to have her charter for her social media and her, like her communications team. So it's going to be kind of like all encompassing. So that's kind of, that's why I have it still in draft format. And I apologize for it taking a little bit longer than anticipated, but I think we're going to get somewhere in the, hopefully the next next month, like a couple of weeks or something. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Did anybody have any concerns about this? You know, just seeing good for me. I think some of the things I was concerned about um, aren't there anymore or were, you know, slightly edited and now they don't concern me. Yeah.
It's, it's not on the, on the agenda, it's sort of, it's the section. I'd like to see a scheduled meeting for pedestrian community. Did, did you schedule a meeting? Well, I thought Phyllis was going to schedule a meeting. We didn't, we didn't say we would schedule a meeting.
We will. I was having a long vacation and it's slipped my mind.
Because we need a borough room. I believe in minutes. The attendees are ready for it. So.
I may reach out to you again for the names, just in case. I think I blanked on a couple. I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to you.
I, I think I sent Nancy.
I, I, yeah, I think, I know, or I sent you the names that I knew, I think was um, Mandower and Christine Little. And I believe Mary Case Stein.
Right.
Right? Um, so then you'll do the agenda and everything that you
Yeah. We can schedule a meeting.
That's all. Eric, oh, Eric. The school's the other thing you had.
And Christine Little.
Christine Little.
And I don't know if you had anybody else.
I might have a brand one in mind.
Similarly, for communications, might post something online to recruit people, machine. And I don't know if there's
I, well, I mean, yeah.
I'll stop. Nancy appointed three committees. Dark Woods Committee, Communications Committee, the Best Green Committee.
I, I understand, yes.
Amanda, have you ever gotten any information about the um, police application process?
I, there was a post that Scott made on LinkedIn. Did you guys still look from?
Yeah.
And then just request it.
I just wanted to make sure about that.
The official, the official flyer right on today on all of our social media accounts. And I was going to do one B two. This is for, recreate a self-service, yeah. Officially a self-service, yeah.
Are you putting the QR code for that survey that Phyllis has the cards?
I have it set up for tomorrow. There's a lot going on today that I didn't want to be too many things at least.
Yeah, because I forgot to talk about the Dark Hollow Woods and the QR flyer. Thank you so much. On Saturday, Nancy and I, along with Carolyn and Carla from Environmental Planning Design was out. And we were passing now business card size surveys, which have a QR code on the back. The QR card, if you scan it, the QR code, if you scan it, will bring up information about dark colored woods as well as a flyer that we're asking everyone to complete. And once you hit the submit button, it'll go back to environmental planning and design. And they will be able to give a tally of how many people visited the site, how many people completed the flyer. We'll also be able to analyze the data. And the borough plans to go back out to this uh night cell on August eleventh, Friday night.
Did they tell you why the QR code wasn't working for a while there?
I think they were changing it around when people were trying to access it on Friday and Saturday. The QR code was at the very beginning, but it's no longer at the very beginning. You have to scroll down through the first section to get to a link to click on the QR code. But I think they were working on it the same time that people were trying to access.
I did this this morning, actually offered the credit of this business card and it worked. That's why.
I checked it a couple of times today.
I like the detail inserted to, that really gives us a reason how the part section being used.
Yeah, that's nice.
Ironically, a lot of people on Saturday didn't realize we had a forty acre park at top of the hill.
It's amazing how many people didn't know. We were like, the dark hollow woods. And I said, yeah, I lived here. I've lived here for fifteen years and they're not knowing it. So you know, to, if nothing else, we've introduced a bunch of people that there is a park. But Phyllis did a great job. Nice to see. Not a shy bone in the woman's body. Miss Congenial.
Yes, Miss Congenial.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, back to correspondences. Um, there's three in your packet. Um, they're definitely for summer for information purposes. The one that you have is from C E A. We were copied on as the borough to a permit holder on Allegheny Avenue. Um, this is part of the building code that, that rarely comes up, but it does essentially when a, a permit holder thesis construction for a certain period of time, they do run the risk of having their permit become null and void. As this letter indicates, August service deadline. Um, haven't, the, the C E A who wrote the letter has not called me back yet about what if? I think they're gonna, what the fair, what happens is we get close to two Thursday. That's what happens. So I wanted to have information because somebody may ask me in the street what's going on. Well, the law is telling us exactly what we're doing. This is exactly the law since we have to do. And we'll go from there. Um, an operational thing that's gonna happen next week at the regular meeting is the, uh, the third annual review of our review and approval of this participating C D B G uh grant opportunities. As, as Sean identified, there's three of them right now of years forty, forty-nine, fifty. The county requires us to do it as I include in your cover letter with the resolution, why we're doing it. It's for census taking. That way, the more participation the county knows they have, they go to the federal level, get their allocation. Because they know we're just staying in it. It's operational and we'll be doing that at the regular meeting in two weeks. In your packet, uh, last of the minutes from the most, three most recent meetings from the block steering committee. Again, the box steering committee is comprised of the lead engineering firm, Trans Systems, who's doing the design work, which is what their grant covers. A representative of friends of Riverfront, which uh happens to uh, their, their, their task is for trail development within the region. The representative is actually a borough resident, so we have talked on the side about other things as well. And it represents from all the other communities involved. Um, some council members, mostly recreation volunteers, like you have here. I do participate. Um, Nancy said, and a couple of them, well, she's decided to check just to hear what's going on too.
And I attended the big meeting.
The big public meetings. So as long as it's come to me, I'll be forward to you keeping a low profile things as well. Um, community planning, Sean touched on this during his annual report. Um, the rain guard issue, but there's also outstanding issue of water, no pun intended, in the back of Oakmont Place with adjacent property owner. We're having the developer, at least the site engineer try to figure out what's going on back there. Um, it's a water condition. It did not, did not exist. Um, I'll be fruitful, truthful based on my creatures. It may not be groundwater. It might have been a spring that's on a new path because of the grading. And now it's finding its path for least resistance. But that's on the site engineer to figure out on behalf, on his own behalf, the developer's behalf, so. Finances in your packet, all you have right now is a warrant list. Um, only reason, because the budget reports about each are only reconciled today since the end of the month was yesterday. If you, we can't send you by separate copy, having the uh regular meeting packet for your reviews. Any questions about the checks? Or payments, do let us know and we can certainly get some more details if necessary. Next in your packet is a bunch of items related to the pension plan. First is the actual evaluation reports for both the police and general plans. I did reach out to Gabrielle. She's gonna get dates to me because Dave's on vacation. Um, they will meet remotely with us. It's not a problem. Um, I didn't prep on a question, but the question we raised about the state and how we can allocate it, something we can discuss that. As you'll know, the actual very Russian valuation reports, both plans are funded well. One is funded better than the other. I think it's over a hundred percent. Uh, the other percentage is at ninety-two percent. Um, that's good. And that's about all I can say about the valuation.
Fine. We uh, this meeting that we're looking, uh, will be during the day.
During the day.
Anyone interested in that, I mean, there's uh, we met with these people several times, like their questions. They're very responsive to their questions. More convenient, I believe, it's something that's
It'll be, because Dave will be in his office, Gabrielle works at her office, which happens to be in Florida. Um, but even so, we're expecting to be to have probably the next ten to twelve days. So I think if you're, you know, school beach or something, might be able to swing it. And even promoted too as well, we can send an invite to do that way. Also, I'd invite to know some things, yes, exactly. Um, also in your packet, um, due to their timing, this is the paper we got to mock up is the M M O payment for twenty-twenty-four's budget. So these two, these two studies will be completed and acted upon at the regular meeting in August, or we can even wait till September. So I'll do it until September thirtieth. It's the annual contribution, the annual borough's contribution to both pension plans. That will probably not, if we can get the meeting with Gabrielle sooner, that might help our direction better when it comes to this um payment for this year as well as future years regarding state aid. But just because I always get that question, hey Scott, what was happening with the last couple of years? We, Brian generated a chart for us that's in your packet, uh, representing the history of M M O payments, both police pension plans as well as the general plan, state aid over those years, as well as um what has happened regarding the entire M M O pack we have to pay out. I added twenty-twenty-three just that tabulation is to see if we're paying in the next couple of weeks. And then because we got the M M O statements, I've added twenty-twenty-four, this is our working copy. I can update, have Brian update it to at least extend the blue, the green and the red lines. But we won't know the black lines until we actually get stated.
Just so I'm clear and everybody else here, my understanding this would be that the red line is tracked by the total state and to get the number.
That's, I believe, yes. I believe it's all a solid one, correct? So I wanted that for council to have your historical perspective on that.
State aid applies only to the police.
No, it applies twice as much to police. Police are worth two units each. The unit is determined by the number that they get for warrant and the insurance, like in Barrett. The program number is probably around forty-five hundred and five. So each cops were two units each municipal workers.
Item number ten is an action item or administrative item we'll do as a resolution. Um, state law mandates in police pension plans that they must contribute at least five percent unless dictated by other type of agreement. In the borough contract, we only ask them to contribute three percent. So we have to actually do a resolution every year to certify that. Um, I tried, I was trying to, it's a five year, let's do one resolution, but no, it has to be done every year. So this is for twenty-twenty-three and then we'll do around the one in twenty-twenty-four for that kind of response. So that's all I have on your finance. Next is the public safety. The mayor is out. Might want to talk about his body cams.
Uh, camera, the new car is in service. Camera was installed yesterday. The audio cameras are currently in use. There's a learning curve to them. I will pass this on around, I've been going with John thirty years. Forget I'm wearing it and evolve and probably say swear word before you're gone. So if you want to pass that around, you can see what, what they actually are. We have received everything. We're actually making a refund because they sent us too much of one thing. Um, the officers are adjusting very well to them. Like you said, it is a learning curve for a while. It's something we're not used to having on us and we're getting used to it. So they're all functioning. I came and tried to do a demo for you, but that one is not working. A software problem. I went down toward the borough employees and that chat. So I'm trying to negotiate that and change my product. But
I say, he does.
My audio work, the visual wasn't, so I would put a little thumb drive. We're still learning the software as well about technology. So drives and all the stuff that's way above my head already. They're working very well. Everything is very seamless.
Have you had to use it? Yeah, I mean, if you had to go back and
We have, yes. We use it for reports, the UIs, things like that. They're very, very effective. For that reason. Gives, gives officers a little playback when you're very amped up or stressed with a situation, you pick up details you didn't even see.
Yeah.
So it's very effective. If you can, won't matter, we can, shows a test, but if you push the front button, you can see it. That means you're being put down. So it takes two, two pushes to push it off. So it takes two, two pushes to push it off. It'll turn it off.
They can tag, you can tag it then.
You can see on the top, it'll say that's we can tag it whether it's a D Y attached to a medical emergency. We're adding them as we go. They give us, we started with a list of ten, we're adding more. Just to keep it going, but that's.
Wrong.
Does anybody have any points on that or is there certain policy items like maybe we can discuss, but it would not.
Yes, if there's other questions regarding policy, I would say those. General machine stuff here.
In the old days, I know it was a clip on time because if they quit grabbing, can they grab, can somebody grab your cameras?
Yes, this is actually very, I'm just gonna take off since it's not working, but. This is a very strong bag, I think. But this is what we have waiting for the other ones for. Two week. So these are made for jackets, thick clothes, so forth. The key is don't be quicker between them.
Wait, and it's near your heart if you can, I was certain.
They're very easy. They're just. It's gonna be a learning curve, so I'm giving a lot of leeway for. And one nice thing is these will tank with our car cameras and they actually. Attach your car and the videos will link together. So the video of the car saying, I'm looking over here, they will link together. And we have two officers in the car, all three of them, the other car and two officers. The technologies, but we have received everything. I just talked to Scott today. They're not billing us. We've only paid probably half, so we're waiting for the rest. Yeah, so far. That's really all I have. I did want to take a minute just to thank Les Leager. For the wholesome service department in particular, Les. You know, a lot of people appreciate you, Mount Fork, because of that, on his off time to get this together. Sergeant's test, current list, he's painting with a civil service list there, which is only logged in and I didn't realize he. The law has changed years. Military points change, this changes. He's making sure it's updated all the time and we have never had an issue with our test. We just wanted to give a shout out to him. And all his off time that he does this as well as keep this process running.
It's all I have. I agree. I'm working with my brother. Especially in this, you know, the culmination of the advertisement went out today. So he's, he's very, he's ready for the next, next phase and we go from there.
It's good that we stay in there. Thanks. And well, if you were involved about my philosophy, he sort of, I'm done.
Yeah, and I guess it's done.
He may very well feel that way again after this process, so it probably wouldn't hurt to basically give him another shot at the end of that.
So it doesn't hurt to mentor anybody, you know, so the standard is the standard for me.
Uh, just a question, are. Are we still satisfied partly?
Yes, I have. I've heard open points from the officers. Their general responses about where they are. I mean, it's the M S has stretched everywhere, but they're very fat and all. I will tell you that, let's see.
I know during our discussion with Presbyterian, um, they were specifically asked that and they said that they would be very happy. There are some months in Europe, they're pretty frequent.
I think we're down to twenty two this time. I I last month I figured. Um, but we're a July report, but it gets, and I'll send it out to council. Um, under public works, there is one item. There'll be a change order for council to consider at the regular meeting. As as the letter and Sean's letter indicates, you know, it's a difference. It's a savings of a hundred forty eight thousand, four thirty two. So in perspective, you know, we had budgeted for a million dollar project to replace the sewer lines. It actually came in at six hundred forty thousand. All told, now the project itself is a four hundred ninety one thousand dollar project. I'll correct Sean if I read your notes correctly, so. Um, that helps.
When you have a decrease, if it's a grant, you have to recalculate the matches and all that stuff and.
Yeah, it's pleasant for anyone.
Alright.
Whatever else we need to plan project.
But it's it's your, it's your first policy that regardless of the deduction, there's a change order identifies the true contract price when it's set in.
We always do a final change where to set the in place quantities and to set the time of the contract. Basically, a bubble, yes.
Madam President, go ahead.
Okay. Um. Remarks from the council? Um. Uh, Tracy, you have any remarks this evening?
I do not, except for does anyone know what happened to the the deer that had the wire wrapped around his um. Or her neck? There was a huge issue like and then Scott knows about it and we contacted the humane agency and I I I believe the police were involved. Does anyone know what happened?
We could not find it again today. You know, I called into us. The officers actually cut it out of the, whatever stock. Wrapped up, but once they cut it out, it's off with the wire still on it. Uh, the only thing we can do at this point is contact game commission. But game commission's answer is gonna be if we get into a safe area, you can't get the dispatch here.
Yeah.
That's past history, but we had a complaint today. We went and checked the entire area. We couldn't find it.
Yeah, no, I've seen so many of them and I like was looking for it. So thank you. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. But that's that. I have no other comments.
And I'm I'm gonna jump in here for a minute. Um, I think you probably got some calls, at least one call today about a deer. Near the Episcopal Church in Port.
Chasing.
Chasing the student, yeah.
We don't know that one's a standpoint.
Yeah, and it's chased her like three different times. Um, a resident, a walking dog and the dog just is not aggressive towards deer.
So deer, deer is that close to.
But I guess that he believes in the neighborhood, believes there's a doe and two fawns behind the church. And so this dog is protected.
Generally, it should not be.
I know, I didn't remember that, but I don't know.
Game commissions only, they're not protected. Once they're, they have no.
Well, it's aggressive in any event, because she's, she's a very reliable. Couldn't find anything. Cause she said she would have the other people also call and give you specifics.
We'll modify the language, but there's a cheaper business class.
Cost of cheap, it's a cost.
Cause they don't run away from the rest of it. Okay, I'm sorry. This I jumped out of turn. Um, Mr. Arnold?
I think we covered most of the findings too. So we're gonna schedule a meeting. Uh, we should move. Oh, should we?
U C C.
The com, no, com.
Oh, 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 oh.
For what?
The H O A, yes, yeah, we're, I just asked them to send me more dates to get into the catalog, so some dates we need to meet. Store a lot of issues in the comments.
Oh.
The next, the next set of issues along, it could come up on Thirteenth Street.
And are we? Are we gonna have a meeting with, could we contact the H O A about the stormwater at the fairways? Or not yet?
I mean, you're, you're taking notes. Now that he came up, Sean came up with a probable cause. I'm gonna, I went, I I reshoot the other one with.
Oh, okay.
This is the drawing. This is a concept you're planning to do.
Okay.
And how to go by it.
Okay, I did. I meant to ask you when you're going.
I am basically preaching, but that's part of the process.
Okay, this is the new rules. I'd like you to say something on that. Everybody gets one moment and then there's another one. Um, Mr. Brankley.
I have.
No comment. And I believe it's Miss. Oh, that Miss Friday? No, nothing, nothing. Miss Leonardo?
Yeah, I think on the issue of stormwater, um, that big um rainstorm Sunday, I had a resident approach me about flooding down from Washington. And she had given the impression that I guess there's a bomb storm rains down there. She thought it had been fixed. Not, is it?
Third Washington, I'll just explain it. It's it's if it's not as flat as pancake, it actually flows backwards from the grave underground. I dispatched Sean at least two different times to figure out how to get the stormwater to get out of the intersection. Um. He there, it's cost, it's becoming costly or costly because of the fall. That that seems to be the lowest spot in that area. So he's gotta get, he has to design it that gets it through the low side or it over towards Allegheny or Sean, through his family.
Yeah, I think that sums it up. We looked at it, we surveyed it, actually with what we thought was the logical answer, but it's flatter than the logical answer said, so. Um, we'll look again now with the. What's the lift to reroute the storm sort of the other way?
Alright.
Gets great a little bit, storms, or it gets the river. Um. We'll we'll prepare a cost estimate for that. Um, that probably will become a grant discussion, actually. Or our funding address or our supplemental on that. Yeah, I might as far as say, could we do like the percentage of stormwater postage?
Right, yeah.
And he just didn't answer me on the phone, so. No, that's ridiculous. But it is, it is a problem. I did have a resident problem, but I tried to call the resident back, going into the phone. That to fire, if you want to go to Google, you can see everything drained like that. Yeah. So if we can fix Holden drain, probably fix this ball, right?
Is that on our wish list of grants?
It was always, it was on the, it actually was on the Oracle list and it's still sitting there. Um.
See Oracle list, I think it was a number there assumed. Be easier fix. You could call the way we thought.
Yeah.
Figure it out.
Um, and my only other update is on the siren. I talked to our contact at Federal Signal on Friday and I talked to the planet. They have reached the stage of scheduling installation.
Hmm.
So they're currently, they like, there's only certain installers and then we have installer to make sure they have child clearances, although. Everyone's goal at this point is to get the installation done before it's all done. So that gives them twenty three more days, even before ten three back in seven. Um, so anyway, so I think we're, at this point, we're just waiting for the installer to coordinate with Chief Planer to find a date that works for everyone. So. Hopefully.
Aren't you happy she's handling this one?
So what what it just reinforces is that you get a run around. You always get a run.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, for sure. No, I've been, I mean, I've given me a better.
I mean, this is a run around. It's something that we want.
My, I guess.
And you know, we want this, and it's like, yeah, we'll get to it. Yeah, we're willing to say.
I I if if that was then it just then kind of like impressed us. Uh, that's all I, thank you.
Is that not?
Um. Do we need to do anything for the dog walking on the boulevard officially to pass or?
I think we do, because I think that there's. Well, I don't believe it. I'm gonna, I was jumping, I don't think, I didn't know if they're in the, in the rules for the. Yeah, for the area of trail. It's specifically, there's no dogs. I don't know. I think it probably do. Well, this one though, I know.
They have, yeah.
Yeah, I think, cause there was um. The Tommy Decker sign that used to be trapped to the garbage can that had all the rules and I'm pretty sure that said it. No dogs.
Cause that was maybe when it's, we need to be updated signage for.
Yeah, I don't know what sign down in.
I don't choose.
I saw the temporary.
Yeah, that was saying, yeah.
It it was, then the Boulevard project is a nice quick narrative on the sense of this is a temporary.
Yeah.
We're studying this, participate by using the garbage cans and they pick up like the dog.
And they said.
Yeah, the behavior.
Very, um, expectable. Of the, of the trailer. And that's good news.
Um, the funds from canned recycling, I didn't know if we had determined a place for that funding to go. Um, so yeah, in Verona, I guess they take the money and it goes towards like the upkeep of the doughboy is what I've heard. So. So I didn't know if we had designated something and I was thinking, um, one of two places. One. Um, that could fund the dog bag stations at the upcoming dog park, since that would be like needing to be refilled and then something to go empty them. Um, but then also if there's any funds that are left over, any other sustainability efforts, we do find a place for community garden. You know, that that could be a self sustaining thing. So, um, but I would love to see us look at the dog bag stations, especially if this is gonna be something that's permanent. Um, just wanted you to know the thousand followers on Instagram this week.
I was, I took a screenshot of my ninety nine.
Great.
I said, did we put this post on who's gonna be one thousand person? I said that.
Go ahead.
Nice characters, so I didn't do that.
Um, and then, um, there is a growing hot hole at Tenth and Washington. Um, I guess when you turn on to Tenth from Washington, where the bricks meet the pavement.
Oh, there is, yeah.
There's a space. Uh, and then just a reminder, if we can make sure that we're on a list for line stripping for the schools before school starts.
It is.
They are there. Was it? Or I guess it's like today. Oh, I think that like on the, it was on a list right now.
Oh, no, 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 I like.
Fantastic. Efficient.
I make one note on the dog on the harbor detail.
Yes.
No, no, I just wouldn't be amended the ordinance to allow dogs. Um, you can start calling, it says dogs may be permitted on leash subject to reasonable. Provide our council was broad, approval given for parks. So once the council gives the okay, it's okay. So there's no order that's changed as needed. Okay, just sign a judgment. So. One of the permits, yeah. They're only on a leash subject to reasonable rules, restriction, basically.
We've said. In dark hollow, oh, they're permitted off leash.
And then. That was specific. And specifically designate designated areas.
Off leash.
Yeah.
Okay, did I understand you correctly? Dogs are allowed in Riverside Park on leash or not?
Dogs may be permitted on a leash.
Maybe.
Subject to reasonable ones and restrictions.
We have fines, we have fines down there to.
So the Borough Council can approve dogs on leash.
But they are permitted in crease signs on which.
I'm only interested in Riverside at this point, because I've had people complain to me if there's a dog down there. And I'm operating under the assumption that no dogs leased or not are allowed in Riverside Park.
I just think this must make everybody want to be on council and everything like that. People come up and complain about this.
What section are we looking at? You're in one forty one dash six?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm interested in that.
Blood.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, so I mean, I think you're, I think there's leeway for council to allow or prohibit dogs. As they wish.
I just want to make sure that the existing laws cannot be interpreted to allow dogs in Riverside Park.
I think you did, you're posted, there's no dogs.
Okay, any other questions or comments or?
I have, you have a couple. My practical case here. Through the uh. Drop gap wanting to that relating to charges from video here.
Yes.
footage.
Yes.
That and ordinance.
We're gonna do a resolution.
Resolution.
And we can get a piece there. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and so because we talked about this, um, it's interesting under if someone wants to request.
A video.
Then, um, X twenty two does a carve out and says this isn't right to know. This is a different process. You have a rights card reasonable fees as we've spent a lot of time, a hundred dollars has been determined to be reasonable. Um. Is it now? Okay, so I'll I'll verify that, but because it is not the Borough saying we're gonna establish a fee to do this, I think we can, you know, it's not our rule. We're just enforcing. Through the act, I think we can do it by resolution, which is what I'm gonna recommend and we'll get something drafted for you on that.
It's Act one twenty two.
I have a look, yeah, it's not false, yeah, to hear.
Yeah, I don't have a dog in my head. Um.
So if you just stop frivolous fishing.
Right, and it's, and like the Office of Open Records, even though this is not right to know, they even have like a standard form. With that, I'm gonna recommend adopting because there's no reason to recreate that.
When any, anything we do, the Allegheny County DA's office, if anything, criminal, they're the ones that make the decision. Whether it's released or not, anyway, so. They're the ones that make the decision whether to release them anyway, so. There could be anything that you see this on camera, but what did you see? So essentially just stopping. Every single person requesting every ounce of video that we have.
Right, but you want the resolution in place before someone makes that request. So if they do end up getting it, so we should do this this month? We could, or next, I don't, I mean, but well, we're.
There's nothing further. Um take a motion to adjourn to executive. Okay, clear.